It's two minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Mayor DeVere?
Aye.
And councilmembers Palmer and Little Roberts are absent.
Thank you. Item two, we are going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Cub Scout PAC 132. So if you will join us up front, and we'll wait for your instructions on what to do next. They'll tell us to rise. I'm glad you're anxious. You can be wherever you want.
Audience, please rise. Call our attention. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the NDC.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
While the mayor's passing out some City of Meridian pins, I just wanted to commend, I'm an alumni of PAC 132, and so appreciate seeing you gentlemen here today. Thanks for leading us in the pledge. Very, very cool. There we go. Always good to have 132 in the house.
Thank you. We had a nice discussion. They have great ideas about how we can recognize random acts of kindness that kids perform in the community. So we'll see how we implement some of those great ideas. So thank you for joining us. Okay, item three is our community invocation. I don't see. Daryl Taylor?
Troy's here.
Well, thank you. Well, I will invite our community to please join us in the community invocation, or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
Thanks, Mayor. Would you join me in a word of prayer? Well, Lord, I just want to first acknowledge this season where we just celebrate the birth of your son that you sent to bring peace to the world, the Prince of Peace. And, God, we do pray for peace in our country and in our community here, Lord. I'm sitting back there thinking of our law enforcement officers out tonight on patrol. And, Lord, we pray for a safe city for them, and all those peacemakers here that we are so thankful for, God. We also are mindful of those who tonight might be hungry, or cold, or frightened. And, Lord, we pray that you would provide for them, that they could find their way to where they could receive what they need. And, God, last but not least, I'd just like to pray for the meeting here tonight, and the city council, the mayor, Lord, that you give them a lot of wisdom in the business of the city. I know even these things are important to you. And so I pray, God, that you'd bless them, and give them an extra measure of grace this Christmas for serving us all. So we thank you, God, ahead of time, for what you're going to do here. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Troy. Merry Christmas. Okay, item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
We do have a couple of changes. We're going to be pulling from the consent agenda I, J, and K for some discussion. And as to consent agenda item S, the amount is a little bit different. The correct amount for that item is $3,706,950.28. And with those changes, I would move that we adopt the agenda. Second.
I have a motion, second, to adopt the agenda. Is read. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Mr. Clerk, any signups under five?
Madam Mayor, there were a few signups, however, in reading the proposed topics of discussion. They all relate to other items further down on the council's agenda this evening. So nothing unique to item number five.
Okay, very good. Counsel, our next item, item 6A, is a proclamation. I'm going to move down to the podium. I'm going to take a chance and think that all of the football players will fit up here with me. So come on up and join me, please.
I'm not so sure. Back in, back in. You got space back here? Lots of room. Smoosh back.
Okay, coach, up, up, front and center as well, please. If you'll join me right here. Well, this is so impressive. You know, my, you guys probably don't know this, but my dad was a football coach. He coached high school football for many years, started off at Bora High School. And so I'm kind of used to hanging out on the field and in the stands with football players, but it's been many years. So it's truly an honor to be standing up here with all of you. And one of them is my grandson, number 44. All right? Okay, I apologize in advance. Okay, so to all of the individuals standing up here, this night is an opportunity for years to come for you to gloat that you had a day named after you. One of the proclamations includes all of your names. And so if you go to this day, you will see in the public record that you had a day named after you. So when you have kids, or a gal you want to impress, here's your chance, right? Everyone has a day, wants a day named after them. So we are very proud to recognize athletes in our community who achieve great things. And that is what today is all about. So I'll read the proclamation in your honor. Whereas being a Rocky Mountain football player is about tackling and blocking, kickoff and return yardage, and touchdowns. It is also about leadership and character, building confidence and teamwork, all traits that are needed to succeed on the field, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the Rocky Mountain varsity football team had a successful and rewarding season, as they were the first team at Rocky Mountain to have an undefeated season with a record of 12-0. Wow, where's the spirit, guys? Whereas through their strong desire to exhibit excellence in all they do, their hard work and effort resulted in Rocky's first football champion since 2015 in the Idaho Class 5A State Tournament. And whereas the capturing of the state title builds school spirit, and allows these student athletes to know they are champions. Something that can never be taken away from them, proving a place in the history of Rocky Mountain High School. And whereas the leadership training and discipline of coaches helped all team members to focus their talents and passion to become a winning team, with each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeVere, do proclaim, December 18th, 2018, is Rocky Mountain High School Football State Champion Day in the City of Meridian, and I call upon our community to join me in congratulating the Grizzlies on their remarkable athletic achievement, and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. Please join me in congratulating this group of fine athletes.
We want to say thank you very much. It's our honor to represent, you know, the City of Meridian, and our school district, and our school. And as I've told these boys, the thing that they really accomplished that was amazing was, going 12-0 is pretty special. It's pretty unique. Takes an uncommon group of men to stay focused for that long. And I thought they did a really good job, and I'm extremely proud of them. And you should be proud of them as community members, and as parents. We have a tremendous football program, and they're reflective of that. So thanks again. Appreciate it a lot.
Congratulations. Okay. You have to stay through the rest of the meeting? You really don't.
So we are, we're actually going for a championship celebration. So we haven't had our state championship banquet, so we're going over to the school to do that. So that's what we're going to do. That might be a little funner than just getting to the.
I don't know.
This is more fun, maybe.
Good job, guys. Good job.
Bye, Bella. Okay, item seven is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
With the removal of I, J, and K, and the correction to S, I would move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Okay, there were no items moved. There were items moved from the consent agenda. Sorry about that. So we will move to item eight, and I and J are related. I would say that, Mr. Neri, do you want to briefly cover that?
Yes, Madam Members of the council. So items A and J are really housekeeping measures. They're two of the Welcome to Meridian signs that were installed in the last few years. One is located on Fairview, near the Carmex business site. The other is on Linder and Chindon area, in the area where the primary health has been constructed. These were in conjunction with the property owners. They were constructed a few years ago. There was some cleanup stuff that we thought had been accomplished to actually accept ownership, put them on the city's insurance, and to cover them that way. And we thought that had been accomplished, and somehow that had gotten missed. So Ms. Kane from my office was notified of that, and she put these resolutions on. So it was just a closeout of a project that's already been done for a few years.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor, appreciate the further explanation, Mr. Neri. It'd be great, though, Madam Mayor, if we could schedule maybe at our January workshop just an update on this program. If it's still in, if it's still occurring, are there other of these signs that are out there without outstanding projects? Just give council an opportunity to be updated.
Very good. We'll put that on the January workshop.
Then, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do we need to approve each resolution? Or is it separately?
Madam Members of the council, you can do them all together. If you wanted me to do the third one, you could do all three of them together, if you want to as well. So whichever you prefer.
Okay, let me continue one. I'm okay with that.
Madam Mayor, on the other item that was moved, item K, that is the lease agreement with the congressional office for Congressman-elect Fulcher. This is a continuation of an ongoing lease that we've had with the congressman's, the congressional office since 2008. Just to give some of the history for the public's benefit, back in 2008, Congressman Sally was the representative for our district. His office was located in Boise. When Congressman Minnick was elected, he sought to move his district office into Meridian. We didn't have a congressional office here. It was felt by the mayor and council at that time that that would be a good benefit to the public, to allow the public to have access to the congressional delegate here in Meridian at City Hall. City Hall was brand new, has just opened. That office space at that time was one of our spaces at that point in time that was unoccupied and undesignated for any department. So it was bare walls, bare floors, no improvements at all. So that lease at that time in 2008 was reflective of the tenant improvement that went on, which was to install carpeting, lighting, doors, walls, windows, such into that space. So that lease for 2008 with Congressman Minnick reflected the cost to the city, both for the TI work that was done, as well as the ongoing costs for maintenance, utilities, janitorial, and such. After that, two years, Congressman Labrador was elected. He wanted to continue having the office here. He didn't negotiate the rate. That is the same as today. We didn't at the time, either with Congressman Minnick or with Congressman Labrador, really try to be competitive with the market. We were really looking at this as a public opportunity for the public to have space, as long as the city was recouping its costs for the space being used. And it wasn't necessary for city business at the time. And one of the things Congressman Labrador had requested, or at least in consideration, was that the congressmen are all given a stipend by the federal government for district offices. And the further they can leverage that space into affordable office space, allows them to have more offices in various parts of the state or in their district. And so that was another consideration of the discussion back when Congressman Labrador was originally elected. So that rate has stayed the same through 2010, '12, '14, '16, and now this. It's the same rate since. So that's the basis of the lease that's in front of you. That was the reason we got to where we are on the cost. And again, it's really meant to make sure the city recoups that, allows the public to have access. And as many of you know, and maybe the public knows as well, Congressman Labrador has had a number of public events here as well. So the public has had access to come here for town hall meetings and open forums and such that he's hosted. We would anticipate the same with Congressman Fulcher. But that was part of the reasoning for how we got to where we are.
Mr. Cavanagh?
Madam Mayor, thank you, Ms. Neri. My intention with pulling this off, the consent, was really just to thank staff for putting this together. I think it is a great benefit to our community to be able to have a member of our congressional delegation have their main office located here in City Hall. And I was really excited to see that Congressman-elect Fulcher has chosen City Hall to be here. I think it's a great benefit for our community and for our citizens. So I just wanted to thank staff for putting that together. Appreciate the added explanation. I saw an article this morning in The Statesman, kind of asking some of that. So I think it's great, the added explanation that you provided for the public that was here tonight. So, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve items I, J, and K together.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve items I, J, and K. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
Okay, all ayes. Item 9A is.
Madam Mayor, I apologize, but I forgot to bring something up earlier. During the agenda setting, item F, Byright, is an application that the applicant has requested to withdraw. And first, I wanted to see if you wanted to check for any members of the public that might be here. We could put it on the front of the agenda and accept that request, and was that one?
So is there any members of the public here for item F? For the public hearing for Byright LLC Apartments? One. Yeah. Well, they have requested to withdraw their application, and so we will not be holding the public hearing. We will open it, and council will consider accepting the withdrawal.
Thank you.
Thank you. We may want to also have a conversation about item 9E. Mr. Neri, is that appropriate to have at least the conversation ahead of these other public hearings? Just so we know how we're moving forward?
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, based on the unusual circumstance of that, it might make sense to do that now.
Okay. So I guess I'm requesting a conversation with council on what they want to do in regards of 9E. We found ourselves in a predicament because we have two council members that are absent tonight, and one council member who just found out he had a conflict. And so that leaves three council members to make a pretty large decision for our community. I would like to open a discussion to council on where your comfort level is in making a decision tonight, accepting public testimony, and any conversation you have about that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Maybe I could kick it off. And procedurally, Mr. Neri, do we have to go through the process of amending the agenda, putting this up first, open the public hearing, and then have the discussion?
This is just procedurally, so it doesn't have to do with the technical aspects of the application. But, Mr. Neri?
Madam Members of the council, Councilmember Borton, I would say no. Because if the discussion is to, whether to hear this matter or not, that's a procedural question. If then, the decision of whatever you choose to do, if it is to do something other than hear it on the agenda as it's apparently posted, then we would probably need to do that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Just for some context, the conflict of interest is one that precludes me from sitting in this manner. For some brief context of what occurs, we've got a client with our firm who's begun negotiations with the applicant and trying to be one of the end users on the project. When that became known, we kind of walked through a process and disclosed this publicly, where we raised the issue with the city's legal counsel, informed him, reviewed city code, and made a determination of what's the appropriate next steps. City code identifies the appropriate process, which we're describing here, and it precludes me from having participation in this application going forward. That's the direction we've been given by our city attorney. And it's also what's most appropriate to ensure the process not only is technically proper, but is perceived to be proper as well. I've had no conversations with anybody within the city about any of the substance of the application. We'll continue to remain completely detached from it, which includes discussion, quite frankly, of this procedural process, and discussion of any component of the application, whether it's today or at a future date. So that disclosure is made public now, and turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor, to continue the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borton. So I would ask the council, any thoughts they have on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I think the big question before the council is, do the three members that are able to vote feel comfortable in moving forward? I think it's beneficial for the public to be aware. Because of our limited amount of attendees, anything short of a unanimous vote, either in favor or against, fails. It would require a three-person vote. And with a project as complex, complicated, and significant amount of time invested in this, do the three of us have an ability to come to a consensus after hearing from the applicant and the public? My personal feeling is we're elected to vote. We're here to do the people's work. That's why I'm here. But I also want to take into consideration what's most fair for the applicant and for the public that have given up considerable amount of their time to be here this evening. Do we come up with a better solution with five members here, or four members here, than we do tonight? I'm supportive either way. I'm happy to take testimony. I'm happy to hear from everyone that's here tonight. But I'm also supportive if this body feels it's more prudent to wait for a later point in time when we can have more council members that are able to vote attend. That's where I stand.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum?
Yes, I came tonight prepared to hear this, and to hopefully help make a decision. However, the other side of me feels that it would be unfair if, well, if we were to be unanimous and come to a decision, whichever way that would be, some people would feel that it was unfair that there were only three of us here. And I really wish I could know how the applicant and the, and the, this neighbors felt about this situation. I don't know if there's a way to poll the audience. But I'm willing to do whatever, honestly. I'd want to do what the people want us to do. But it is a tough one. We've never had this situation come up. And it is a very large application and a lot to consider.
Mr. Burnt?
Madam Mayor, thank you. My first gut reaction to this is to continue. That was my first inclination when I found out the circumstance that we're in this evening. This is a big application. This will have, you know, it would be a big, could be, you know, a big project on that corner for many years to come, many generations to come. And so I think it's important, as a council, that we make a prudent decision as a body. So my first gut reaction would be to continue it. However, I do respect the time that both the applicant and, you know, the citizens have made. So I would prefer to continue, but if it's the intent of this body to hear testimony this evening, then I'm okay with that as well. Obviously, we all came prepared, so that's not going to be an issue.
Mr. Neri, perhaps you can give an idea of the choices that the council has?
Certainly, Madam Members of the council. So a couple of options. You can continue it now, at this point, to a date certain in the future to be heard. The clerk would know when council members have given us notice they won't be present. So you can have the council members here that can vote on it. So that's one option. Again, the issue that Councilmember Cavanagh raised is a statutory one. It requires that for any motion to be approved by the council, a majority of the members that are present must approve it. So in this situation, there are four members present. Even one accuses himself, they're still present for that purpose. So that means every other one, it would have to be three, all three would have to vote together. That's awkward going into, knowing that upfront. I know that's an awkward situation for all of the council members to be in. Certainly, you could hear it. You may have reasons other than this issue to continue it. That's problematic sometimes for a lot of folks, both from the applicant and the public, to do that as well. Again, I recognize it's difficult to continue matters upfront. People have taken the time to be here and rearranged their schedules and lives to do that. But again, if the idea is to weigh what's the balance between fairness, I think there's both sides. I think there's, both sides have legitimate concerns of fairness, whether to hold it today or to continue it. So, I don't know that there's one prevailing decision either way. I think reality is, is that it's a legitimate concern, and Councilmember Mylum is correct. In all the time I've been here, I cannot recall we've ever had this situation. And so, this is a fairly unique circumstance. Part of it is, is our code required, we have to have all these hearings today. Because of the way our code is structured, and they had to be scheduled, we couldn't split them out to different days because of that. That's a procedural issue that we'll deal with in the future. But that's part of the dilemma here. If this was something we could have done differently, maybe we could have done that. We couldn't do that in this case.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Perhaps it would be beneficial if the councils opened it as to maybe moving this item to the front. Open the public hearing. Give the applicant, I see some community representatives that are here, an opportunity at least to chime in about their feelings about tonight versus in the future. What we don't want to have is that somebody that's made plans to be able to testify tonight that wouldn't be available in the future and not have their opportunity to be heard. To me, I think that's, that's an important issue. If, if those that are, have given up their time so much to this project are willing to be generous yet again to come back at a later point in time, I think that's probably the most prudent decision for us to make. However, if that does not work for our community groups that are here, for our citizens that are here, and the applicant that's here, then I think that we need to be prepared to move forward.
Good.
Oh, sorry about that.
So, Madam Mayor, I guess I don't know if, if, as the chairperson of the meeting, if you're, if you're open to that. I know we've already approved the agenda. If we need to modify it, how we need to get, that we can at least begin this process?
With council's direction, I can change the agenda for that consideration. Okay?
Support there?
Yeah.
Okay, so, through council, unanimous consent on the side that can vote. Not our lone council member over here.
Put it on the left.
We will go ahead and jump to item nine E. The public hearing for H. 2017-0088. I will open this public hearing first for procedural discussion.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. And maybe, Madam Mayor and council, if you're supportive, maybe kind of following routine, at least give the applicant the first opportunity to share their feelings about continuing versus tonight. And then, perhaps, members of the public, I see representatives of Southern Rim Coalition, Chamber of Commerce, other active homeowners associations, maybe let those that feel the need to chime in. And then, if there are citizens that feel that they are unable to, that we have an opportunity to at least hear how many of those are as well.
So, we're limiting comments out the gate right now is just to talk procedurally on hearing the application in its entirety. And so, I would ask for the applicant to come forward. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ken Howell. I represent the developer, DMG Links. My business address is 877 West Main, Suite 1000, Boise, Idaho. As the council can imagine, this is an exceedingly important item for us. We've been here, as you know, several times before and spent a fair amount of time on this project. And we do have other things with other public agencies that have a timeline of their own as well. However, we recognize that this is a significant issue for the community of Meridian. It's a significant issue for this council. And we would, I think, at the end of the day, like to have a decision that is fully and fairly made by the broadest constituency of the council that we can have. I think that would be fair to the applicant. I think, frankly, that's fair to any opposition that may exist to the project at this point. And frankly, it's fair to the council, because I think it is unfair to put those remaining in the position of knowing that their individual vote would be determinative of what the project would be. So, I think, all things considered, as disappointed as we would be to be delayed further, I think that's the right thing to do, and I think it's the wise thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, and, and just a point of information. On January 2nd, I understand, we'll have four members that can vote at that time. So, we still won't have a full sitting council, but we will have four rather than three.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we understand that the conflict issue is what it is, and so that will of necessity remove it. What you should have done is recruited a couple of the football players to sit in as temporary councilmen, so.
I think they were ready for it.
Okay, thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer, but I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Was the second the only option, or are we going to give them options of the second or the 15th or the 22nd?
Certainly, there are other options than just the second.
And, Madam Mayor, if I may, I do know that on the 15th, no council member has informed me or my office that they would be absent. So, we would have a full council that evening minus the council member that needs to recuse. I would also, from a public's perspective, at the amount of testimony that our office receives, that date might also work well in terms of as far advanced notice as possible to the members of the public to arrange their schedules.
And the 15th would work well for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have a couple of spokespersons for the neighborhood. Could you raise your hand? You are with an HOA or...
Saw Sally walk in.
Yeah.
She didn't raise her hand. I mean, come on up, Sally.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of city council, Sally Reynolds, 1166 West Bacall Street. So, excuse my late entrance. I thought it was obviously later on the agenda. So, let me just make sure I understand. You're taking comments on whether or not the application should be continued, correct?
Yeah, right now, we're just taking comments procedurally on whether to hear the complete application or to continue it.
I guess, as a representative of the Paramount HOA Advisory Board, I would be in favor of continuing the application, like Mr. Neri said and Councilmember Burnt. There are a lot of neighbors here tonight who have given of their time to come with the expectation that, that would be heard. But I also understand the significance of having a full city council. So, we would be amenable to continuing the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Is there any representative else who would like to comment on the procedural question at hand?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Recognizing that there's representatives, but is there anybody in the room that would not be able to make it here on the 15th to provide public testimony? I think, Madam Mayor.
Open it first.
Open the public hearing. So, I guess at this point then, is, I guess, a motion may be in order to continue this public hearing to January 15th, 2019?
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to continue this public hearing to January 15th, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Our apologies to the applicant and to all the neighbors who came to join us tonight. But at least we can wish you a Merry Christmas. Mr. Howell.
Madam Mayor and council, I wanted to specifically say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to you as well, but more specifically to thank you for the kindness of taking this procedural matter up early so that we don't sit around here for quite a while and then end up in the same place later. So, thank you very much.
Again, our apologies. This, in my, in my tenure, this is year 19, I've never seen this happen. So, our apologies.
What are you going to do? Thank you.
Very interested in everyone's opinion.
Mr. Clerk.
Given the significance of this application and the amount of public testimony, I did want to check with the council to get a sense of a full renotice or what renoticing steps. Usually, when this, when this occurs, the renotice is just the agenda notice, because those in attendance would know what that date is. However, again, given the, how significant this project has seemed to be, I wanted to see what type of renoticing my office should undertake, if any.
I think the next door and, and is, is adequate unless...
Madam Mayor.
I, I know our, our neighborhood representatives will get it out to their HOAs, and, and we have HOA contacts as well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Perhaps, I mean, if, is there signage that is currently listed on the site that references today's date?
There is, yes.
So, Madam Mayor, I think either, I think in a perfect world, we pay to update the signage with the January 15th date. Send information out on next door and rely on our good friends and partners here that are in the room to, to spread the word. But what you don't want is someone that's not plugged in to, to drive past that and think that an event has occurred when it's actually pending.
Yeah, you do need to change the signage.
When the, when the application is continued, not, not traditionally, no. It doesn't necessarily need to be updated. So, if that is the intent of the council, I'm sure Ms. Allen can work with the applicant to ensure that that happens.
No cost to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item nine A is a public hearing for CDBG program, year 2017. And I'll turn this over to Crystal.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. If you recall, I was here a couple of weeks ago to present on this report. It's the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or we call it the CAPER. So, I'm just going to give you a brief review of what it is and then go into the comments that we received. So, the purpose of the CAPER is to evaluate the program for the program year, which ran from October 1st, 2017, to September 30th, 2018, and just give us a better idea annually how the program is progressing. We, we expended $510,000 during program year 17 on various projects. There's a list of them here. We did some good work. We had a lot of success. There was food stability for almost 4,000 households, prevention of homelessness for four families, homeownership for another five families. So, we did a lot of really good things for the community with this program during program year 17. We, all of the activities that were funded were tied back to our consolidated plan, which is a five-year plan. We have goals. This was the first year of this consolidated plan. The goals that we have are to improve accessibility, enhance homeownership opportunities, provide social services, stabilize the rental gap, and administration and fair housing activities. So, the major updates to the CAPER are on Attachment 1, which is the public comment piece. The first thing that we needed to do was add these proof of publications to the document. We also received some narrative for the affordable housing section, and the, the summary of the comments are in Attachment 1, but the updates are also made in the actual report. The administrator for Ada County Housing Association, Jillian Patterson, she gave us some additional information as far as what the, what the concerns were in Meridian, why they had a hard time meeting their goals. She also gave us some information as far as what they plan to do for outreach in the future. Councilman Kavanaugh also had some clarifications requested. One item was the scholarship for the Boys and Girls Club that shows the family was not low or moderate income. And he wanted to know if we needed to do anything to correct this and if it will put the city at risk. And thankfully, the way that it's classified, 51% of the recipients have to be low to moderate income. And so, that program year, it was actually 95% of the people, because there was only the one. So, we don't have any issues with that one. The second clarification, also requested by Councilwoman Kavanaugh, was around the affordable housing in Meridian. It's, it's a huge issue, and he wanted to know what the plan was moving forward. Will we change the amount available for homeowners assistance programs? And will there be changes to the way we define affordable, affordable housing in Meridian? The first, first piece of this, sorry, I can't get the microphone right. The first piece of this, the homeowners assistance programs, there's some discretion with the providers to, as to how much they offer each one of the home buyers, depending on what their need is. So, as we talked to Ada County Housing Association, they did say that they are looking at providing more assistance for the families who need a little bit more. So, it may end up that they don't serve as many households, but they'll be able to find housing for those ones that they do serve. And as far as how we're going to address affordable housing moving forward, the consolidated plan, the five-year consolidated plan, this is the first year of it, and we actually have it in there as a goal to develop an affordable housing plan so that we can address these issues. So, we don't necessarily have answers right now, but moving forward, we hope to have a better answer to this question. So, those were the comments and clarifications that I received. So, this is what our timeline looks like. We are having the public hearing for the CAPER tonight, and we hope to close the public comment period, and that you guys will move to approve and adopt the resolution so that we can get this submitted. It's due December 29th, but I, if everything goes well, then I should be able to finalize the CAPER in HUD's online system and submit it, and then send the hard copy to them by Friday.
Counsel, are there any questions at this point? Thank you, Crystal. This is a public hearing. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, the only individual indicating a desire to testify is Dr. Lindsay Park.
Okay.
Don't see Dr. Park.
Hey, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to testify on this item that didn't sign up? You're a quiet group. I'm seeing none.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve resolution. Madam Mayor, I, I move that we close the public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, program year 2017.
Have a motion, a second, close the public hearing on item nine A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Do I have a motion under nine B for Resolution 18-2122?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 18-2122.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve item nine B. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Briefly, thank you, Crystal, for a timely response, especially getting your feet and underneath you new at the city. And for those that are in the, in attendance, this is a great program. I think it allows us to do a lot of great good in our community and serve those that are in need. And so, I just wanted to thank you for getting up to speed quickly and answering my questions in a very expedited fashion. It's appreciated.
Thank you. If there is nothing further, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item nine C is a public hearing for H. 2018-0127. We'll open this public hearing with just a brief explanation. Our public hearing process does start with a presentation from staff about the application and any staff comments. Then we do ask the applicant to make comment. And they have 10 minutes. Mr. Clerk, is that 10 minutes or 15?
It's 15 at the front end.
Okay, thank you. After they have had a chance to present their application as well to the city council, council will have questions of staff or, or the applicant, and then we'll ask for public testimony. council will have questions of staff or the applicant, and then we'll ask for public testimony. The public has three minutes, and there is a timer on the screen at the podium, so you can kind of keep an eye on how much time you have. After the public testimony is accepted, we will ask the applicant to get up. They have 10 minutes to respond to any testimony and questions that came up during the testimony. Council then will have an opportunity to ask a question of staff applicant or any of those that testified. They have had an opportunity to review the public record and any hearings and public comments about each application and then render a decision. So with that, I will turn this over to staff for the staff report on item 9C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The first application before you tonight is a request for a development agreement modification. This site consists of 82 acres of land, it's owned CN and R8, and located at the southeast corner of East Amity Road and South Eagle Road. This property was annexed in 2015 with the requirement of a development agreement, which was later amended in 2016 to include a more detailed plan for the eastern portion of the site. And concept plan there on the left is the concept plan that was previously approved for this site. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use neighborhood. The applicant is requesting a modification to the amended development agreement for this site to update the conceptual development plan to include a more detailed plan for the west portion of the site and inclusion of a provision to allow the construction of a wireless communication facility on the site prior to subdivision of the property. So what we're talking about here tonight is the yellow area here, which is this area right here on the right-hand plan. The existing plan depicts medium-density residential uses for the area nearest the Eagle-Amity Road intersection around the Idaho Power substation. The proposed plan includes a change for the northern portion of that area along Amity to include a self-service storage facility and office and retail uses. A cell tower is proposed south of the Idaho Power substation, and that is in this little orange area right here where my pointer is. The cell tower is classified as a wireless communication facility and as such requires conditional use approval in the R8 district because it is proposed in a residential district without an allowed non-residential use per the specific use standards. The storage facility use depicted on the proposed plan in a future CC zoning district is not a use that is contemplated in the mixed-use neighborhood designation, nor is it a use that's allowed in the zoning districts listed as appropriate in the MUN designation. And those are TNR, TNC, LO, CN, and R15. Fairly zoning designations that allow fairly low-impact residential and complementary uses. The CC district may be considered, but the applicant will need to demonstrate how the use and zoning is consistent with the mixed-use designation and specifically the mixed-use neighborhood designation. Therefore, at this time, staff does not support the portion of the concept plan designated for self-service storage and recommends the use remain as medium-density residential. The applicant should submit a development agreement modification and a rezone application concurrently in the future if a storage facility is desired. A conditional use permit would then also be required if a rezone and DA amendment is approved. No written testimony has been received on this application. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed amendment to the development agreement, except for the self-service storage facility in the future CC zone depicted on the proposed concept plan. This area should remain medium-density residential until such time as the subsequent development agreement modification and rezone application or a use and zoning that is permitted in the mixed-use neighborhood designation is proposed and approved. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Sonya, thanks, first off. Appreciate that. Merry Christmas. In your report, you talk about that the CC district may be considered for a self-storage unit, but the applicant has to demonstrate its compatibility. When we're talking about demonstrating, what does that refer to? Is that design, access? When we're looking for them to demonstrate, what is it that we're looking to have them show to us?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman, there are several things, really. In the mixed-use designation, it's specifically the mixed-use neighborhood. It's, like I said, pretty low-impact, commercial uses, neighborhood-friendly uses. They should be integrated. Self-service storage facilities don't integrate with the neighborhood typically. Pathway connections, it's just a use that really isn't anticipated in the mixed-use designation. So the applicant would need to prove to us why they feel it is consistent.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions at this point? Would the applicant like to comment? Good evening, if you'll... Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I will. Madam Mayor, my name is John Wardle, 12601 West Explorer Drive, Boise, Idaho, 83713. I am with Brighton, and we are here tonight on behalf of Marty Hill, who we've worked with on other projects out there. He is in Arizona, enjoying good weather. Before I get into that, I did want to mention one thing. I saw last week that Mayor Corey had passed away. I just wanted to recognize that when I started my career, he was very involved with the city. He was the mayor, a good man. That's probably already, you've already discussed, but I just wanted to acknowledge that his contributions to our community and one of the good men, good men and women here, so.
Thank you.
As to the application, just to restate, but also to be clear, tonight, we're just asking for a modification of the development agreement. Part of the requirement of this project was to bring back a more detailed site plan, but this isn't the end of the road of that process. We would still have to come through with a rezone application, preliminary plat for this as well. The impetus of this project or the request tonight is related to that cell phone tower, which is directly adjacent to the substation. We can get into more detail in the future on the mini-storage, which we will. We do feel like that is a good use against the substation, but we'd like to demonstrate that at a future date and process. But tonight, we are asking for a modification of the development agreement to allow specifically the wireless communication to occur prior to plating. And we are making a commitment that we will be back with additional rezone applications or preliminary plat process to address these other uses. So we are supportive of the report that staff has issued in front of you tonight, and I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, have we signups for testimony?
Madam Mayor, we do, but however, I fear that they may have been for the item that was continued earlier this evening. However, I will call their names to make sure. First was Susan Carnes.
Good evening and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. My name is Susan Carnes. I reside at 5556 South Graphite Way. And I'm here on behalf of the Meridian Southern Rim Coalition. And our opinion on this is cart meet the horse. We feel that this is premature to approve these modifications to the development agreement. These are the concerns we're hearing from our members. There is a cell tower one mile west on Amity Road at Locust Grove. We respectfully ask that the city scrutinize the need for another cell tower in this location per the pending conditional use permit process before approving it. We further remind you that this land is in close proximity to the hill and several desirable high-end neighborhoods. And the substation at Amity and Eagle is attractively concealed through tall berms and landscape. Should council approve this cell tower, which we believe should not be allowed at this point until the conditional use process is completed, we ask that every possible measure be taken to ensure the highest aesthetics. Regarding the storage facility, as we've testified before, we object to land use changes in development agreements. We have further testified that substantial zoning changes should be deferred until the new comprehensive plan is created. And all stakeholder opinions have been expressed. And stakeholders, particularly residents, feel that they have a voice in the city's plan for the future. This land has been zoned R8. It had a significant zoning change on the flume in 2016 from residential to mixed-use neighborhood. For that reason, we also believe any uses exceeding mixed-use neighborhood should be presented to the neighborhood in renderings and pre-plats. So we ask that you deny these modifications to this development agreement.
Thank you, Susan. Counsel, any questions?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If it's okay, just because Susan asked a great question and while it's fresh, if I could ask John to respond, and it's just on the procedure of why a development agreement modification to allow the cell tower wouldn't come alongside the CUP application?
Madam Mayor, for the record, John Wardle. Actually, there is a conditional use permit in front of the city currently. That process has stalled because this specific use of the cell tower wasn't previously contemplated adjacent to the substation. So as part of the conditional use process, which is currently with staff, which went to a public hearing but was continued, this was the process that we were asked to go through was do a development agreement modification to bring the wireless use in. If that gets approved, then the conditional use process can continue. So it's already in process, but it's paused at this moment.
Could it not have been done in parallel so that... If you do it separately, council doesn't ever see CUPs. It's considered and decided at planning and zoning. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We had this discussion internally, and it is awkward because the CUP is only done at the planning and zoning level unless it's appealed. And modification of development here is only done at the council level. So I think what the stall Mr. Wardle is referring to is that the Planning and Zoning Commission cannot grant them a CUP conditionally. So since it's not a use that's contemplated and allowed within the development agreement, they can't grant it. All the council is being asked is to modify the development to allow this use to be considered, subject to the CUP. So the requirements of the CUP still have to go through, public hearing is held, conditions of whatever is necessary to alleviate the impact of that to the neighborhood can all be considered. But right now, they can't even consider it because it's not something contemplated.
Makes great sense. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I spoke too soon. None of the other signups indicated they wanted to provide testimony.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there people who have... Yes. Good evening and Merry Christmas.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Denise LaFever, 6706 North Salvio Way, Meridian, Idaho. And I concur with what Susan had to say, but I'll go one step further, a little more direct about it. I adamantly oppose this application to do land use changes in a DA and not to come forth with a cut. There are multiple times that applications come forward with multiple requests. You had one on your agenda tonight that was withdrawn, that had three different things they were asking all at one time. Brighton in the past has gone through and has put applications together with multiple requests in one. But back to the subject here, a cut is required to go back and make this change. First of all, this land is zoned. That just flipped. Can we flip back to the one that you had it on? That is actually zoned land, right over there, that medium-density. There was an application that zoned that. That's zoned residential. Right there, by going back through and doing this, that would require a rezone. By going back and accepting this DA, it says right in here, "Future development of site shall be generally consistent with the amended concept plan dated October 26, 2018," which is this one. So in theory, by authorizing this DA, as it stands, you are authorizing this new design conceptual plan. Not only are you authorizing the self-storage, the office and retail, which is commercial, which is in a residential, that's a rezone. You have your cell phone tower, which requires a cut. So go back through the application process and couple and combine these and do it the right way. We are turning into a city that's over 100,000 people. Process needs to matter. This is just backwards. This is Timber, what is it, Timber Creek all over again. And we need to be doing better as a city. At least, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Denise. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Just, maybe I just over...
No, I said Mr. Burnt.
Mr. Burnt, sorry.
That's right.
I heard a bee.
You were so excited.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that by... I don't think we're approving any of this tonight, are we? I mean, just to confirm, I believe what Mr. Neri said, that we're just allowing for the discussion to take place. I don't believe that we're approving a self-storage unit tonight or office retail or anything like that. I think we're just approving the process, like Denise mentioned, to have the discussion. And there will be future discussion in regard to this in the future when they come back and, you know, with more details. So...
Mr. Neri.
Madam, members of the council, you are correct. They're asking for a modification to allow these types of uses. Some of them are going to require a rezone, as we talked about with the storage facilities. Some will require a CUP like the tower, which has another process. So you are correct. You're not approving any of those uses. You're approving those to be considered for this location. And some of them have, I don't know, and maybe Sonya could say, if any of this isn't, is approvable now with just the development agreement, I don't believe any of these are. I think all of them require more process.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burnt. No, you're not approving the actual use tonight. However, if you do approve a conceptual development plan with these uses on it, you are essentially saying that you believe them to be consistent with the mixed-use designation and the mixed-use neighborhood designation. So be very careful what you wish, what you're approving. Just, you know, if you approve this tonight, this is something that they will be allowed to develop in the future, then through the appropriate processes, a rezone and a conditional use permit for the storage facility.
Mr. Borton. You were next.
Madam Mayor, I thought I understood John to say that portions of the DA modification that addressed the self-storage and office are effectively withdrawn today and will come back at a future date along with a future rezone? So the only portion of the DA modification at issue today is just specific to the cell tower itself?
Madam Mayor, I believe he was wanting the office and retail to remain. It's an allowed use.
Mr. Wardle.
And I thought this was going to be short. Just to clarify, we are going to have to come back with a rezone anyways. And that process will come back to the city council. And if we need to address the office and retail and mini-storage all in one package as part of that DA, we can do that. That's not a problem. What we're asking for specifically is the wireless tower. Furthermore, the wireless tower is a conditional use permit item in an R8 zone, which this property already is. They submitted an application for a conditional use permit for a wireless tower, but because that use wasn't specific in the previous development agreement, it was halted. So that's what we're here for tonight. We haven't circumvented the process. Conditional use permit was submitted a long time ago, was noticed for a public hearing, was stopped, pending us coming back and taking care of this element tonight. So if we want to keep it simple, and we're willing to, what we're asking for specifically tonight is to allow a conditional use permit to go forward because now a cell tower could be a use allowed with the development agreement. So that's what we're asking for.
Mr. Mylum.
John, did you have any response to there being another cell tower a mile away?
So my limited knowledge of cell towers is they're very territorial. For the provider or the user of this one, they must have determined that they either couldn't get access... couldn't get access to it or it was deficient for whatever reason. They do co-locate. There could be, I think, four users on this tower. By no means does anybody want to have a lot of cell towers around. But we do have to recognize as well that the way people communicate has changed. Fewer people have home phones, and that need on newer facilities is out there. So, I believe in this case, they've decided that this is a location that's needed.
I guess my question is, you don't necessarily need to...council doesn't have to accept the proposed new conceptual plan to modify a DA for consideration for a CUP for a cell tower?
I think that's at the discretion of the council. A simple amendment by text to the existing development agreement to allow a cell tower is what the city wants to do. I believe they can do that. The process that this development agreement specifically was, as modifications come forward, new plans need to be presented. So, we presented a plan which we think represents what will happen here in the future. But I believe that the city could adopt a text amendment to the development agreement without adopting a new plan.
Well, if a cell tower is allowed in a medium-density residential designation, why do you need to modify the DA at all?
Madam Mayor, it's my understanding that it wasn't contemplated in the previous DA, therefore, it was staff asked that we go through the DA process to bring that in. But it is a conditionally use permit in an R8 zone.
Yeah, I guess, Sonya, same question to you.
Madam Mayor, Council, the reason we're here before you tonight is because the approved conceptual development plan for this site, they're on your left, only depicts medium-density residential for this site, four to eight dwelling units per acre specifically, not a cell tower. So, if you only wish to approve that tonight, please just direct the applicant to modify their revised concept plan to only reflect the cell tower. And then, we can certainly move forward with the conditionally use permit that's in process.
But if a cell tower is traditionally already allowed in a medium-density, why do you need the modification to the DA? If it's an allowed use through the CUP process?
It's an allowed use in the zoning district, Madam Mayor. It's the concept plan that was approved with the annexation for this property basically lays out how the property is proposed to develop in the future. They did not contemplate a cell tower on this site, even though that it is a conditionally use in the R8 district, it wasn't contemplated on the concept plan. It says right on it, four to eight units per acre. So, just to be safe, it is a use that can impact neighbors. So, that is why staff had the applicant come back and modify the development agreement. Just be above board with everybody and...
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, maybe to help too, oftentimes with development agreements, the purpose of them is to limit the uses that would normally have been allowed in that district. And because they have contemplated certain types of things, councils have said, okay, even though you could have a car wash or you could have a cell tower, you haven't proposed to do that, and we're going to approve with what you're proposing to do. So, that's, I believe, was the reason that it wasn't included in this one. So, all uses within that district weren't necessarily approved to be used. It was what they had proposed to use.
Okay.
And to add to that, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure that a detailed plan was proposed at that time. I don't remember for sure. But when we zone a property without a detailed plan, we want to make sure that we give zoning with a concept plan so that we have an idea of what can develop on the property, just like Mr. Neri said.
So, we still don't have detail on this? Do we have detail on this? We don't have a plat?
I don't remember if a preliminary plat came in with this or not.
Madam Mayor, no.
I don't remember seeing one.
At this time, no, there's not a preliminary plat, but we will bring that back. We have a pretty good idea of what we want to do, but just the timing with Mr. Hill, this is what we were focused on with him.
That's true. Any further questions from council? Since we kept calling the applicant back up, any further testimony from someone that has not been able to provide it?
The city's code...
If you'll please state your name.
Susan Carnes.
Yes, thank you.
5556 South Graffy Way. Merry Christmas again. The city code is very clear on cell towers, and I think that is one aspect of this that is being overlooked. Cell towers are discouraged in residential zoning, and there has to be an effort to use all service on existing cell towers. So, I think we need a point of clarification and perhaps a refresher for council of what is actually written in the code pertaining to cell towers, our members, and I think all Meridian residents would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Mr. Burton.
Just to respond, I don't see it necessarily as a...it's a procedural kind of chicken or the egg in one sense. As I understand it, the ability for the CUP, which may or may not be granted by that deciding body, can't be processed unless the DA allows it to be considered initially. So, the request before us is to modify the DA and modify the proposed concept plan just to show that little rectangle where the cell tower potentially could be. The specifics of what that tower is, whether or not it's appropriate in a residential district, and the reason why it's conditionally permitted, if at all, is for a later date in a different body. So, if, on the other hand, this body, which is the only body that can amend a development agreement to allow that consideration even go forward, our decision on the development agreement itself doesn't decide whether or not a cell tower does or doesn't go in. That's not our decision. So, as I understand what Mr. Wardle is asking for, the proposed concept plan on the right would be resubmitted that would only reflect the change where proposed cell tower is included on the corner. The red and the self-storage and the office retail would remain, the yellow medium-density residential for now, and will be addressed with a future application along with a rezone. So, all we're doing is allowing the process to go forward for a future decision on the cell tower. So, it's not a matter of either not understanding or misapplying city code. This is, quite frankly, exactly what it requires. Unfortunately, it's somewhat clumsy, but we don't have an option to process it a different way on this particular application. Now, Madam Mayor, what would be nice, in a perfect world, right, we would see as part of a DA modification, perhaps see what the cell tower specifics might be. It would probably help.
And it would probably skew the process of the CUP public hearing, too. That's the conundrum of this particular thing. Would the applicant like to make final remarks?
Madam Mayor, Council, for the record, John Wardle with Brighton representing Mr. Marty Hill. Just to summarize, yes, we will modify this map to simply just show the proposed cell tower location and removing the self-storage and the office from this so that that process can move forward. And then, we will come back with another development agreement, preliminary plat and rezone to address these other uses, and we'll bring those to you at a future date. So, we request your approval of the modified development agreement to allow a wireless facility at this location, but still be required to go through the conditionally use process.
So, allows consideration, but not particularly approving the use?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, council, any questions from Mr. Wardle?
Thank you.
Council, any further information needed?
Madam Mayor, just a comment and an appreciation to staff, even though this is kind of a grind, that's work well done to catch these discrepancies, note it, bring it forward. I appreciate the applicant being kind of understanding and appreciative, I guess, at least respectful to the process and working it the right way. So, I thank you both for the way you've handled it.
For continuing to stick with the explanation to us as well.
No problem.
Any further questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If none, I'd move to close the public hearing on H. 2018-0127.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'd move that we approve H. 2018-0127 as amended by the applicant's comments here today, narrowing the modified development agreement to address the potential cell tower Exclude the other amendments to the DA that would address potential self-storage or office retail, and that the proposed concept plan that's been presented be resubmitted to reflect only that portion that addresses the proposed cell tower location, and the remainder of the concept plan remain as is until some future date.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So, the request is to get a new conceptual plan that shows only the proposed cell tower location, which, again, does not grant that location. It just allows it to go through the public process for a conditionally use permit.
Correct.
Okay. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylan?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9D is a public hearing for H. 2018-0112. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning and a preliminary plat. This site consists of 34.62 acres of land. It's owned RUT in Ada County and located at 4080, 4115, 4205, 4301, and 4330 East Bot Lane. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is medium-density residential, which calls for 3 to 8 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has submitted an application for annexation and zoning of 35.09 acres of land with R4 zoning, 23.5 acres, and R8 zoning, 11.5 acres, zoning districts, and preliminary plat consisting of 101 building lots and 21 common lots on 34.62 acres of land in the proposed R4 and R8 zoning districts. The proposed density of the development is 3.1 units per acre, which is consistent with the medium-density residential future land use map designation. There are four existing homes and accessory structures on this site that are proposed to be removed, except for one home, which is on Lot 9, Block 9, and a garage on Lot 6, Block 7, which will remain on lots in the proposed subdivision. A new home will be constructed on the lot with the existing garage, and that is this lot right here, if you can see my pointer. The existing home will be required to hook up to city water and sewer service within 60 days of it becoming available. Access is proposed from the west via the future South Hillsdale Avenue and from the east via East Bot Lane, both designated collector streets. Stub streets for future extension and interconnectivity are proposed to the west to the Marsh and Rasmussen properties and to the south to the Williams property. ACHD is requiring Bot Lane to be improved off-site from the east boundary line east to Cloverdale Road. A new bridge is proposed on Bot Lane over the 10 Mile Feeder Canal to replace the existing single-lane bridge. A structural engineer is reviewing the...actually, they have reviewed the existing bridge over the 10 Mile Feeder Canal, and they did restrict that...our fire marshal there can chime in, if you would, to...
They restricted it to single-axle vehicles, so just a fire engine, the fire truck cannot go across it.
Thank you, Joe. The 10 Mile Feeder Canal and the 9 Mile Creek cross this site. The canal is proposed to remain open, and the creek is required to remain open and be improved as a natural amenity. A 15-foot-wide irrigation easement is depicted along the southern boundary of Lots 2 through 9, Block 4, and along the northern boundary of Lot 9, Block 3. The UDC requires easements wider than 10 feet to be placed in a common lot that is a minimum 20 feet in width unless otherwise modified by city council. The applicant is requesting council approval for the easement to be located on the associated building lots rather than placed in a common lot. So, that will require council action if you desire to change that. A total of 16% or 5.25 acres of qualified open space is proposed, which is 6% or 1.85 acres over the minimum required of 10% or 3.4 acres, and consists of a community orchard, pond, collector street buffers, parkways along collector and some local streets, stormwater detention facilities, and open grassy areas at least 50 by 100 feet in area. A minimum of two side amenities are required based on the size of the development. Several amenities above the minimum required are proposed from each of the three categories: quality of life, recreation, and pedestrian or bicycle circulation systems, consisting of the following: three picnic areas with shelters and tables, a sports court, pickleball, a segment of the city's multi-use pathway system along the 10 Mile Feeder Canal, internal pathways and micropaths, a pond with a bench, a tot lot with children's play equipment, a community orchard with picnic tables, and an additional 20,000 square feet of common open space area. Conceptual building elevations were submitted for future homes within this development that are consistent with those being constructed in Shelburne subdivision to the west. Building materials consist of stucco and board and batten siding with some stone veneer accents. Most of the homes will be single-story in height with some two-story. They will range in size from 1,800 to 3,000 square feet, contain three to four bedrooms, and have two- and three-car garages. The rear and sides of homes visible from the Hillsdale Avenue and Bot Lane collector streets are required to provide articulation in those elevations. The commission did recommend approval of these applications. I'll just go through a summary of the commission public hearing. Those that testified in favor are Jeff Bauer, the applicant's representative, Michael Kingsley, and Sean Parks from TO Engineers. Those that testified in opposition were Jennifer Marsh and Jared Marsh, Amending, or Lisa Essen, Earl Essen, Bonnie Stiles, and Jeff Vulture. Written testimony was received from John Carpenter, TO Engineers, the applicant's representative, and Tim and Lisa Petsky. The key issues of discussion were, first, the Petskys requested a six-foot-tall privacy fence and either a restriction for a single-story home on the lot against their southeast corner or no second-story windows facing... or no second-story windows facing north due to the location of their outdoor kitchen and pool area where they would like to retain their privacy. Concern pertaining to increased traffic in the area generated from the proposed development and impact on quality of life for existing residents. Concern pertaining to the lack of continuous complete improvements, i.e. street and sidewalks on Bot Lane from the East Project boundary to Cloverdale Road. They're against the density proposed, belief that it's too high for this area, they prefer R4 zoning. The Marshes request a barrier is constructed along their southern property line next to Bot Lane where their son's bedroom is located for safety, fencing along their east boundary, and single-level homes constructed adjacent to their property. Concern pertaining to impact of the proposed development on already overcrowded schools. Concern pertaining to cut through traffic on Bot Lane, Peaceful Pond between Cloverdale and Eagle Roads. And finally, lack of transition in lot sizes and buffering to existing large rural lots. Key issues of discussion by the commission were as follows: the provision of additional landscaping, retaining walls, rocks, boulders, or some kind of a buffer between Bot Lane and the Marsh home to protect their house, similar to that designed by their, excuse me, designed for the Rasmussens. Timeline for the house on the Fultcher property to be constructed. Jeff Fultcher stated that they intend to build their home just as soon as the property is subdivided. In favor of the proposed open space and side amenities, the requirement of a street buffer on the Fultcher property for continuity, whether or not off-site curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements should be required along Bot Lane to Cloverdale Road. And finally, if the proposed density, 3.1 units per acre, is appropriate for this development. The commission did make the following changes to the staff recommendation. They struck condition number 1.3E, which recommends a common lot as provided for landscape street buffer along South Trenton Avenue on the Fultcher property. They included a condition requiring the applicant to work with the Marshes to ensure that they have an appropriate buffer, landscaping, and security protection for their home from traffic on Bot Lane. That is condition number 1.1F. And they included a condition requiring off-site improvements, curb, gutter, and sidewalk along one side of Bot Lane from the East property boundary to Cloverdale Road with the third phase of development, and that is condition number 1.1G. There is one outstanding issue for counsel tonight, the 15-foot wide easement that's proposed along the southern boundary of lots 2 through 9, Block 4, that I mentioned earlier, and along the north boundary of Lot 9, Block 3. Counsel should make a determination whether that should be placed in a common lot as required by the UDC, or if it can remain within an easement within building lots as requested by the applicant. Written testimony since the commission hearing was received from Tim and Lisa Petsky, and Jesus Tovar from Criterion Land Management. Staff will stand for any questions.
Counsel, any questions at this time? Would the applicant like to comment? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Merry Christmas. Let me make sure I know how to run this thing before I get going. And could I clarify, do I have 10 minutes or 15 minutes?
15.
Thank you, I probably won't need them all. Deborah Nelson here with Givens Persley, my address is 601 West Bannock, and I'm representing the applicant for this Shelburne East project this evening. I have with me the developer, Randy Klarno, and also Sean Parks from Toothman Orton, that are also available to answer questions if there's anything I can't respond well enough to you about. Both the city staff and the P&amp;Z have recommended approval. We're very appreciative of the hard work that Sonya has put into this. We have just two things to talk to you about specifically tonight. Sonya mentioned one of them about the specific ask on the easement, I'll get into that in a little bit. And then there's one condition of approval that came out of the Planning and Zoning Commission that we want to address with you as well involving some off-site improvements on Bot Lane. So just a couple of quick overview points, Sonya covered that really well. I don't need to go about where we are. We are seeking this two different zones of R8 and R4. Together, they result in a gross density of just 3.1, and that puts it within the 3 to 8 range that's contemplated by your medium density residential designation and your comp plan. So the project does meet all of the city criteria for annexation and zoning, it's within the area of impact, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and that is contiguous with utilities available. Also, as Sonya went through, we're seeking a preliminary plat approval for 101 single-family buildable lots, two of these already exist, so it's 99 new, and 21 common lots. This will be built out in three phases, as you can see on this slide. Phase 1 and 2 are to the west, and expect to get going on that right away in the spring. Phase 3 is on the east side, to the east of the 10 Mile Feeder Canal, and hope to follow quickly with that in the fall. Looking at access, you can just see in this kind of global view, the access that eventually heads out to Eagle Road through Peaceful Pond, which becomes Zaldea, and then Bot Lane, which heads out to Cloverdale on the east. Looking specifically at Bot Lane internal to the property, the developer's doing a lot of work on this road, taking what was a private-only lane into a public collector status. So significant widening improvements to the collector standards with bike lanes, detached five-foot sidewalks, a 20-foot landscape buffer, also constructing a new bridge over the 10 Mile Feeder Canal as part of Phase 3. The current bridge is less than 20 feet wide, it can handle a single rear axle fire truck. So the Meridian Fire Department has agreed that this can serve as emergency secondary access until Phase 3, when the bridge can be replaced. ACHD's conditions of approval require the development to install temporary bollards until that bridge is replaced and that access is restored. The developer has already worked with the fire department on acceptable bollard designs that they are the collapsible bollards. The developer stands ready to do the Phase 3 bridge improvements as soon as possible. The issue is not one of providing the capital right away, it's one of timing with the non- irrigation season. The project is providing significant open space. As Sonya noted, it exceeds the UDC's open space requirements, 16% instead of 10%, 5.25 acres of developed open space. This has significant amenities with both passive and active from several categories in your UDC, your recreational amenities with a sports court, and the tot lot with playground equipment, and an open playfield. From your quality of life category, three picnic areas and a common space open lot, an orchard and community garden with a public gathering space. And from your pedestrian category, there are five-foot wide paths throughout to increase connectivity, and a regional 10-foot pathway along the 10 Mile Feeder. This slide shows you a couple images of the, some of the amenities that are provided. The houses are lovely, they've already been built in the Shelburne 1 and 2 that are to the west, so the city already has a good indication of what they're going to do here. And there'll be a mix of single and double-story homes, primarily single, with home sizes ranging from 1,800 to 3,000 square feet. The architectural style is contemporary and modern farmhouse. The developer has worked extensively with the neighbors, there were three neighborhood meetings held for this project. A couple of comments on specific changes or accommodations that have been made in response to neighbor comments. Holly and Kendall Rasmussen have asked that we fence their property there up in this corner, I guess, I don't know, oh, there we go, up here around this corner of where Bot Lane curves. They've asked that we fence the entirety of their south and east properties, and we've agreed to do that. We've also proposed some significant landscape buffering here that we will install and maintain along with, in front of this fence, and a lot of rock and landscaping there. We've also worked with the neighbors, Jared and Jennifer Marsh, to realign Bot Lane. This hatched area here shows a portion of right-of-way that actually extends through their home, and improvements on their yard. And so we are realigning, that's the angle here, Bot Lane to go further south, to get outside of that area and to get further away from their home. We've agreed to work with the Marshes and with ACHD at the time of final plat to accomplish an exchange and vacation of that right-of-way. The Marshes have also requested that we add some additional landscaping to create some buffer in that area, and we have agreed to do that as well. We've also worked with the neighbors to the north, that you can see, they're right up here above this community orchard, Tim and Lisa Petsky, to reduce the number of lots that are on that shared property line. And we moved this orchard amenity up here so that they are adjacent to common area. As was discussed from comments at the commission, they have asked for a six-foot privacy fence and for a single-family story lot here adjacent to their property, and the developer is willing to do that. We're also asking the council to approve this irrigation easement. I'll just explain that briefly. It comes down here at the bottom, and then it's also on the bottom of this lot. We're asking for a 15-foot irrigation easement because 10 feet is just a little tight to fit in the irrigation pipes that we need there and to allow maintenance, but we don't really want to stick a, just a skinny common lot that's 20 feet wide here. It adds a burden onto the homeowners to maintain that, and it shrinks the sizes of these lots. And so what we're asking instead, we've made these lots deeper so that they have plenty of room for the building envelope and still to accommodate that easement, it doesn't crowd out their ability to develop those homes, but so they can have the larger lots, but there's still plenty of room for that 15-foot irrigation easement. Your code allows you to approve this, it's a council-only decision, so the P&amp;Z didn't weigh in on this. If for any reason you're not inclined to approve it, we'd ask to revert to the 10-foot and just make do rather than have another common lot there. One of the most significant things we need to talk to you about is a condition that was imposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's condition 1.1G, which requires the installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Bot Lane off-site from the development. From the boundary of Shelburne East on, right here on the east side, all the way, and you can't even fit it onto this one slide, I've got two slides to show you the stretch, it's a quarter mile, all the way out to Cloverdale. Notably, that stretch of Bot Lane is in Boise's area of impact, not the city of Meridians. This came up only after the commission had closed their hearing, and so the developer did not have an opportunity to weigh in on it. Also, it wasn't a condition of approval recommended by staff in their staff report, so we just had no knowledge that was even going to come up. But there's some facts that are important to this, that we need you to take into account as you consider this. You know, as discussed already, the developer's going to make significant improvements to Bot Lane within the development, as is required and standard, by widening and improving to collector standards. There is no ACHD requirement or otherwise to improve off-site collectors that aren't fronting your development. And as we look at this, and I, it's a big area, so it's hard to even see this, but I'll walk you through some of what this is. This is, our engineers helped us overlay where the existing improvements are, and so you can see this in topo. And just to talk through some of the feasibility problems we have with this improvement, I mean, even if you set aside the significant cost that would be associated with those kinds of improvements for a quarter mile. But if you look at where ACHD believes they've got 50 feet of right-of-way, which some of which is prescriptive, I mean, these are the improvements on the north side that are in there. This includes irrigation facilities, this includes power lines, this includes some improvements on these properties. Where there have been developed properties, so you can see this one example of Antler Ridge, they have come in, as is required, and developed their own frontage, and widened their roads, and put in sidewalk, and curb, and storm drainage facilities, and that's what is expected to happen with all of these properties as they come in and develop. And so Antler Ridge shows us where this sidewalk would have to be aligned on the front, so it gives you a visual of how much improvement would be needed, not just from all of those things that would have to be relocated, there's about 20 feet of unpaved stretch there, so we're not just talking about curb and gutter and sidewalk, we're talking about widening the road another 20 feet. There's lots of problems with that, in addition to cost, it's not designed, I mean, there's no plan for that to be widened right now for ACHD, there'd be significant work that would have to go into planning that to meet the grade. And another feasibility problem, we don't own any of this frontage, and that creates a couple of problems. From a design standpoint, we don't have any place to put storm drain facilities, and once you put curb in, then you need storm drainage. Normally, you do that because you own the property adjacent to it, and you're developing it, and so then you put the seepage on your own property. We don't have that opportunity here, this is not our property. So it's not even clear how, even with one side of curb, how you would accommodate storm drainage. Another feasibility problem is right-of-way, there's only 50 feet at max here to put in the collector road, we had 56 on our property, presumably that's the same that would be required here. So since there's already an existing sidewalk on the north, to fit this, if you were to try to put this on the south, you need another six feet of right-of-way to be required, you know, again, we don't control these properties. So that gives you a sampling of the problems, I mean, then of course we get into power pole relocation, that's, I mean, we're talking real money. It's cost prohibitive, even if we're feasible. So it's not something that we can agree to. I mean, this developer's pretty agreeable, people ask for things, and they've been really great to work with, but this is not, this isn't one of those things. A correction to maybe Sonya's comments about that ACHD has required improvements on Bot Lane, they have not required improvements on Bot Lane. They did have some discussion of, they'd like a 30-foot stretch here in a prior staff report, but they actually issued a final decision today, so dated December 18th, and it does not require improvements along Bot Lane, for a number of reasons. I think they looked at the feasibility of this, they don't have any plans or priority for this road to be expanded right now, they didn't think the trips were significant to require anything, and there was nothing in their policies that could require them to have that widened. Instead, I think they looked at it and said, this is appropriate, it's a rural stretch road, there's 24 feet of pavement, and on each side of that pavement that exists now, there's three to five feet of gravel shoulders. And they believe that, I mean, that is the pedestrian access until this is built out. It provides the connectivity that I think maybe the commission was looking for, until these other properties develop, and ACHD felt that that was sufficient. And in fact, they asked and imposed a condition of approval that we were agreeable to, which is to go in there and repair and replace that gravel shoulder to make sure it is suitable for passageway. And so what we would ask is for the city to remove this condition 1.1G, either to rely or parrot the ACHD condition that we repair and replace the gravel shoulder as needed, or point to the December 18th decision by ACHD, because that is a condition of approval on us. In sum, I mean, we think this is a great development to be added to your city and your community, we hope you agree. There's some unique opportunities presented by this. The developer has gone to a great deal of trouble to assemble a group of properties in this area, there's five properties here, it's assembled a large stretch to get 35 acres together. That keeps you from having piecemeal development, it allows a larger-scale planning effort, it allows you to get more amenities and open space, as you can see, we're above your standards here, and there's a great housing product. So we ask for your approval, consistent with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, except for 1.1G, and we ask your approval of the 15-foot irrigation easement, and I'd stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Borton?
Try that again. Got just a couple of questions. On the easement that you referenced, on that southern portion?
Yes.
Is the idea that the property owners would have their, they'd build their boundary fence within the easement, and might be subject to have their fence torn out, you know, sometimes these easements prevent you from building upon them, and let, you do so at your own risk, so is that concern, a real concern?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I don't believe we're allowing any fencing to go within that easement, is that correct? I'm asking our engineer here. No fencing within that easement?
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, concerned that homeowners in the future would be shocked to have their fence torn out if that's necessary for some work done in the easement area, so...
Understood.
So that helps that. With, on... So, that helps that. With, on the Bot Lane, looking at the minutes, it looks like, and I see how it was, the hearing was closed, and one of the commissioners made reference to, it appeared like a belief that Bot Lane to the east was all gravel. There was reference that it was a gravel road, and nobody corrected it. So, is it paved with gravel shoulders? Is this how you described it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, that's correct. 24 feet at least of width of pavement there. It's a rural section road.
Okay.
And then there is three to five feet of gravel shoulder on each side.
Okay. Madam Mayor, so there's a, was there another condition in there that you described a commitment to, like you said, maintain the gravel going forward? I don't know how you phrase it, but there's a different condition that addresses that obligation? Is that right?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, not in the city's conditions of approval, but in ACHD's conditions of approval, the developer is required to repair and replace that gravel as needed. I mean, it's actually in pretty good shape.
Yeah.
But the developer agreed to, you know, make sure, to do whatever's needed, to make sure it really does continue to provide the safe passageway that ACHD believes it already is.
Okay.
So, repair and replace as needed until when? Always till the end of time until that's paved? What does that mean?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the idea was that it would be with development. And so, I mean, all of our impacts on Bot Lane start when the bollards come down and with Phase 3. So, with construction of Phase 3, when we replace the bridge and widen Bot Lane within our own development, at that time, we would also go out and make sure that the new connection that we're creating, that didn't previously exist, now has that. So, it would be at the time of that construction.
So, you'll just ensure that it's repaired and at the time that you start your first building permit, I assume, and that would be a one-time fix?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that is the idea. It is actually an ACHD right-of-way, and they do maintain it. This was just something that they asked us to do at the outset, in case there's some additional materials, really just as a way of contributing. But it is their roadway, and they do maintain this.
Kinda. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess I just would like a little bit more clarification of the irrigation easement, because this happened to me. And I went to put a swimming pool in my backyard and found out there was a 15-foot easement from my fence, my property line, and halfway taken out my backyard. So, in that situation, it's fully fenced in backyard, right on top of the irrigation line, and nobody told me. Well, and it's in the CC, it's somewhere in the deep, in the paperwork that you're not, you're supposed to read every bit of, while you're sitting there signing at closing, while they're waiting for you to just sign your name. You know, I read briefly, but I didn't, I didn't ever, that never really was something at the time that I really thought about until a couple, several years later I wanted to put in a swimming pool. So, what is it that you do, that you're going to do with those at the end? If there's not a fence on it, so they're just, they're open yards, or there's a fence, but it's in, and then there's just weeds behind it, or what happens with that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, great questions, and I may need the engineer to come in and fill in more details, but I'll tell you what I know. As I understand, the issue of why this is in your code is because of exactly that concern that you've raised, that some, that there wasn't enough buildable area. And so, part of what the developer has done here is to make those lots deeper, so there are a minimum 130 feet there. So, that way, they have enough space to provide the building envelope and the improvements you would need without getting into the irrigation easement. And it's only five feet difference from what your code allows without being in a common lot. But as I understand the comments a moment ago, we won't be putting any fencing there. Of course, these easements have to be shown on the plat and CC and ours. I mean, they are recorded with the property. Is there anything else that, Sean, do you want to address that I didn't cover answering their questions? Maybe he can provide a little more detail about what would be used there.
Well, that's the kind of a question.
Madam Mayor, Council, good evening and Merry Christmas. Sean Parks, 2471 South Titanium, Meridian is my work address to your engineers. To clarify somewhat, we probably would have fencing within that easement, as typical with even the 10-foot easements. It would be at the backside of that overall 15-foot easement, and so, the 15 feet would be within the backyard of the private lots. We're just requesting the additional width, just to get mostly equipment back there, without going into, you know, disturbing the lot itself, because of this, because we have two lines, both a pressure irrigation and an irrigate, and a gravity-fed irrigation line there, that have to have some separation. And so, it provides very little width to the edges of the property, and the 15 feet just provides better maintenance ability. Again, we, you know, if this is a problem with the council, we definitely could go down to the 10 feet. It just becomes kind of a maintenance issue in the future. So, does that answer your questions?
And Madam Mayor. Well, I was under the impression that with pressurized irrigation, it's 15 feet anyway, or maybe that is just what's needed for the reasons that you're explaining. I know that's what mine is. It's pressurized irrigation, which is why they have a 15-foot easement. My, the main problem is, you put it in the CC and ours, this thing is this fat, people are expected to read that while they're closing in a title agency, and they might not read it till after they buy the house. If there's some way, you can make sure that people know, put it, put it on the listing with the Realtor, so that people understand that they don't own that entire backyard. They do, but can't do anything with it.
Agreed.
Because it is very frustrating. I had spent thousands of dollars already pre-ordering stuff, so, same. That would be my, please do that.
Thank you for the fence correction. Anything else?
Any other questions at this point?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Susan Carnes is first on the list.
Good evening.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm Susan Carnes, 5556 South Graphite Way, and I'm here on behalf of the Southern Rim Coalition. We have two concerns about this application, just things we want council to look at very, very carefully. And the first, you won't be surprised to hear this word come out of my mouth, is transition. I want to paint a picture for you, because some of you may not be familiar with this area, but this is a really beautiful part of South Meridian, and a lot of the adjoining neighbors are on generous estate or rural-sized lots. Sadly, some of this land was zoned R8. This would have been an ideal location for R2, for the city of Meridian, but some of it's R8. We urge you to be as sensitive in transition to these existing beautiful properties as you possibly can through berms, through single-story homes, through lush plantings, and adherence to dimensional standards. I feel it's the least we owe these really fine neighbors in this part of town. The second concern is this. I have driven up and down Bot Lane. I've gone up and down Zaldia. I think the closest comparison for you is Magic View, through the Woodbridge neighborhood. I had an 8 o'clock appointment to go from my home, which is just south of Amity, up to St. Luke's the other day. I no sooner crossed Amity, traffic was backed up to the interstate. I kid you not, this is what, 7:40 in the morning. Traffic backs up incredibly on Cloverdale and on Eagle, and once Bot is connected to Zaldia, I think you're going to see people taking advantage and cutting through. I appreciate some of the configuration of the Collector Road as it goes through, the zigzags and so on, but Bot Lane is a rural lane at best, and we're really concerned about that becoming a cut through, especially with a school property planned off of Amity. We just ask you to look at that very closely, look at traffic calming, not through the use of chicanes, because we want our collectors to be wide and generous and inviting for cyclists, and chicanes jut out from the curb, and we feel endanger cyclists, not to mention motorists when they're obscured by winter snow and so on. So, those are our comments, you know, just to take a look at lot sizes adjacent to these larger properties, to take a look at transition, and to really scrutinize traffic calming and the traffic pattern, because I really fear for people cutting through this neighborhood.
Thank you, Susan. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Kingsley is next.
Hello, I'm Michael Kingsley. I live at 4301 East Bot Lane.
Thank you, Michael. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays. I've lived here for 32 years. My wife's family has lived here for 72 years. She was born in the log cabin that's in the front of our property there.
And can you point out where you are?
I am, let's see if I can find this. I'm right here. That's me. We spent 17 years living in this log cabin in front, until we had enough equity to build us a house, because this house was built in the 40s. Basically, a shack. It's getting shorter and shorter. Grandpa bought it up, built it himself out of logs. So, we wanted a house that had floors and a ceiling, so.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, so we built this house, we built this house here in hopes of developing our property into a nice neighborhood, not this one here, because these people did approach us, and we turned them down. We were really happy that the Seg Millers that live over here were approached by Randy, and we looked at his developments that were going on over in this area here, and were so impressed, I mean, so incredibly impressed that we just couldn't believe it. There's sidewalks, there's streetlights. I swear to God, in the last week, I have almost killed a woman dressed completely in black with a black dog running down Bot Lane, you know, just driving out of my driveway to get out onto the street, because she's dressed completely in black. It's dark out. There's no lights anywhere along that road. We've got, we're developing. There's lots of people coming in here. I've looked at what Randy has put together. We've got nice lights. We've got fire hydrants, okay? Do you know, there's been over four fires in this neighborhood in the last 10 years. One of them blew up so badly that it burned for two days, okay? And that's because the fire trucks couldn't get to it, okay? They just, they just couldn't get to it. Now, we have, we have an ability to get fire trucks to these homes. We've got amenities that were unbelievable before. Grandma was just dying for sidewalks. I mean, she raised, she raised our kids there on a dairy farm with two cows, and that's how she lived. They didn't even notice the depression. So, you know, to be able to have such a nice neighborhood move into my area, instead of having to move out of my area to find one, is just such an incredible, incredible act that I just can't hardly, I can't hardly get on, I can't believe it. It's just, this is going to be an incredible subdivision. That's all I can say. It's, it's just going to be incredible. Thank you very much.
Earl Essen is next.
Howdy. Name's Earl Essen, 4-4.
You have to wait until you get to the microphone.
I thought you could hear me.
We could, but he can't.
4-430 Bot Lane, okay? Michael hit on a thing that-
Okay, now restate your name.
Earl Edward Essen.
Thank you, Earl. Thank you.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, okay. Michael stated on a point that, you know, the road, and in P and Z, we tried to push for making the road a bit safer. I brought up the point about on Trenton Way, that connects the Fulters' development to the Kingsley's development, of having a rotary there for calming stuff down. Currently, with about eight property owners, eight residents, we have people who drive up and down that street with a one-ton pickup pulling horse trailers at 35-plus miles an hour. You're going to add 101 homes to the already 147 homes that are next to me, and it is not safe. That calming effect and trying to get people to slow down is important. The concerns about them running back and forth between Cloverdale and Eagle, serious. I've had people do 60 miles an hour up in that street and even film them so the sheriff could try to pick them up for doing dirt brodies out on Mike's property. That's a concern. It should be looked at and not just washed away. Having that beautiful street come all the way up to my property and stop in, pretty dumb. Next thing is drainage. On any of the maps I've seen so far, there is no account for the irrigation drainage that goes underneath Bot Lane. I was in meetings at the end of the street where I mentioned that, and it doesn't show up on any of the maps that have been shown tonight. Fulters were down last year in talking with Hayden Homes, when they decided, after about five years, two meetings at P and Z, two at the commissioners, meeting for Ada County, that that was to be maintained, the drainage, and they filled it in and had to be called to open it back up. Next thing is grading, okay? I do irrigation. You can see on that map right here that you have rows of hay. I'd like to see the grading, make sure that I don't have to worry about people in that neighborhood complaining about water getting into that. Prior owners, two times back, they graded it way down a foot and a half, two foot below. I'd like to see, because of the problems with five years with the building, that before any foundation goes in on the Fulters' property, that that six-foot privacy fence gets put in, because I'm tired of picking up trash out of my field before I bail hay, and it's been a problem. There's still trash out off of Bot Lane. Last is, you know, I don't mind stuff being built, but that road needs to be improved, because right now, ACHD considers the center of that road as the center of the road, not the property line anymore. And there's nothing on the south side but baseball courts, open field, antenna, and that could be put in right now and make it a lot safer.
Thank you, Earl.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Maybe we can get some clarification maybe of safety from our wonderful police department, what their view is on Bot Lane, or maybe even clarification from ACHD, from Justin.
Good evening. The only thing that I can share is that this plan has been reviewed by Lieutenant Coliani thoroughly in regards to traffic as well as safety in general. In regards to any specific data, that's something we'd have to provide at a later time.
Mr. Burnt, did you have questions for?
Same question for Justin, just maybe a little ACHD love.
Mr. Lucas, Merry Christmas.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Merry Christmas. Glad to be here. For the record, my name is Justin Lucas. I represent the Ada County- For the record, my name is Justin Lucas, I represent the Ada County Highway District. My business address is three-seven-seven-five Adam Street in Garden City, Idaho. Glad to speak to specific questions on Bot Lane, but first off, I would like to guide you to the ACHD staff report, as I always do, which is the official action of ACHD on this, on this application. I'm not able to provide a safety analysis on Bot Lane, it's not something that, that I'm able to provide to you tonight. We do look at those types of issues through our staff report and analysis process, and the best information I would be able to provide you would be located in that report. And so, I don't know if that, obviously, it doesn't answer your question directly, but if you have some specific questions or concerns, I can do my best to answer those.
Maybe, Madam Mayor, follow-up. Maybe specifically, is that, in your opinion, is that road wide enough to handle the, you know, traffic that's gonna be flying down that road?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you are aware, you know, the, these areas of incremental growth, when it's kind of parcel by parcel-
Right.
-and you're connecting into existing streets, that some of the adjacent properties have developed, some of them have not developed, this isn't uncommon, this is actually relatively common. Frontage improvements are often a topic of discussion in these types of applications. ACHD is not allowed to require off-site improvements for collector or local streets because of our impact fees that we charge. All improvements on local streets and collector streets are exactions, they're at the developer's, you know, expense totally. ACHD doesn't participate at all on improvements to collector or local streets. And because of the way our structure, our funding structure is, we don't have a clear mechanism to, at the time of a specific application, come in and just say, "Well, we're gonna come in and finish the rest of that collector street." That is the responsibility of the adjacent property owners. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's just, that's the, that's the reality of these types of streets and the process that we have. It may not be perfect, but certainly, as you can see, I think it was, these issues were considered by ACHD staff, the requirement to clean up the shoulder and do the best we can out there is the requirement that we can do, and that was done basically because the developer agreed that they would do it. And so, those are the facts of the situation and what I can provide to you.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, any other questions for Justin, why we have him up here? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Lisa Essen.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Essen, I live at forty-four-thirty East Bot Lane-
Thank you.
...which is right here, where the hay is. I'd like to inform, oops, sorry, I'd like to inform the Meridian City Council members, hang on, I can't see, what it's like to live on Bot Lane and what it's been like for the last five years of having development on two sides of me with the Hayden Homes subdivision, which is here and here. We're currently zoned rural southwest, and they put in R8. This area here is slated or proposed as R8. Then the Marshes also have five acres, and they're right in here, and over on this side, it's slated as R4. My house is right here. I'm slated to have ten to twelve homes, by my bedroom, by my pool, by my garden. We have foxes, we have geese, unfortunately, we have skunks and badgers too, but I would like the council to know that living on my little street for the last twenty-eight years as of next month has been a privilege, and I really like being able to do what I do, which is farm, work, have my kids over, and I would like to make sure that adherence to local and state laws and transparency in what it is that happens. Tonight is the first time I've seen what the proposed collector's street would look like, and it looks like it's taken about twenty feet of my front yard, which really doesn't make me very happy. It is a dead-end road, and I drive either north or south to get onto Cloverdale, and I usually go south because there are up to a half to one mile of traffic wait anywhere from seven to nine o'clock in the morning to get out onto Cloverdale. And there are gonna be people that are gonna be cutting through Bot Lane to get to Eagle and back and forth, and I'm worried about the speed that people will be driving on that road. How much more time do I have? Forty-nine seconds, all right. We have concerns about our irrigation because where that road will be interrupts my irrigation, that will have to be moved as well. I'm concerned about construction etiquette, trash, property damage. We've had property damage, we've had trespassing. We'd like to be able to be informed when utilities and other things are going to be happen, happening that concern our property. Nobody has approached us, no one has discussed this with us, and I'd like to be able to have something happen where we get a say rather than have things taken away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Hi.
Lisa?
Lisa, I'm sorry.
Do you mind a question?
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for your testimony. It sounds like you've had not a great previous experience, and I appreciate-
Not at all.
Appreciate you sharing that with us. If I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, it's not necessarily that you're opposed to the development, you just wanna make sure that it's done appropriately without negatively impacting your current use, is that-
That is correct, and I would also like to have it considered that there is a transition in terms of having two rural agricultural use areas on either side of an R8, and on the other side where there's already development, that that's R4. It's, it wasn't considered with Ada County, they just said, "Nope, we're gonna put in R8 right next to you." And it would be really nice to have less neighbors on larger lots that don't have their dogs and their barbecues right in my bedroom. I really like geese a lot better. Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jennifer Marsh is next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jennifer Marsh, and I live on four-two-seven-oh Bot Lane.
Thank you.
See if I can zoom in here a little bit. We're the property that goes along the Canal Road here, and the Fulters are to the right of us, and the Essens, we're right here. My main concern was the safety, having the buffer. Normally, ACHD had the right-of-way, took half of our house away, or a third of it, and they've been working with us to put a buffer, to put some sort of barrier. The concern with that is we wanna be kept in the loop, we wanna be, make sure we have, you know, sprinklers and all in our front yard, that they're not encroaching on our front yard. There's power lines overhead, our cataplyt tree gets butchered every other year, and if they're putting trees there, just what the overhead power lines are gonna, you know, add to the complication there. And then we also wanted to make sure that the drainage is not coming down into our front yard, into our driveway, and they had given me this picture, so that's the one I'm referring to. And we appreciate them doing a buffer, 'cause yeah, if people are coming flying over that bridge, we don't want them coming into our son's bedroom. One other thing that we were working on is to have the ACHD right-of-way deeded back to us. We weren't aware of it, it was back, done back in eighty-five. We were not told, and we refinanced twice, and it did not come up in our title insurance or anything. And then, I am one of the horse trailer people. We drive down Bot Lane, and right now, it's gonna be a bottleneck in front of the Essens, and then where they improved it in front of the new subdivision, then it turns into a bottleneck by the softball fields there. Originally, I had to call the Cloverdale Church of God because the softball people were parking on both sides, kids were running out in a horse trailer, they'd be running out and you couldn't even see them coming. And they've stopped parking on there, but it's still not wide enough for a horse trailer, so you're gonna have a bottleneck, a little bit more room, a bottleneck, and then people flying in front of our house. So I think the horses before the, or the cart is before the horse in this case, of making this a collector's street and making it safe. I'm concerned, I have cats, you know, there go my cats, thinking all them, they've stayed off of Cloverdale most part, but just little things like that, that we've enjoyed, having only seven or eight neighbors, you know, it was a dead-end street and not having that. And we did, originally, whenever Kingsbridge was put in, we did have people cutting through the Canal Road, and we had to call the cops on them because they were flying, and I thought they were literally gonna fly up on the berm and roll into our house. So, high school kids, I have them, and once in a while they do, are obnoxious in speed and all, but that's what I'm worried about mostly, and the safety of that.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Jared Marsh is next.
Good evening. Jared Marsh residing at forty-two-seventy East Bot Lane. I guess my first concern was related to the public notice of this event tonight. The signage I saw driving through all neighbors that had homes within three hundred feet, I only saw one sign, and it was well within the proposed boundary of the development, sitting on the Kingsley's property right about here. So, no notice was present in any of the Hayden Homes subdivision or Zaldia, nor any of the Shellborne houses that are already going in. So I really question whether we've got, met the legal requirement, minimum as they are for notification of neighbors. However, that aside, I am definitely concerned with the density proposed. I feel, one, it's inconsistent with the existing subdivision they've already put in. Why R4 on one side of the canal and then magically switching to R8 on the other, bordered by two five-acre properties? I think, as I brought that concern up in the planning and zoning meetings, they kept referring to a master plan. I guess what I would say to that is I've lived in this area for fifteen years under the master plan, and it's not working. Schools are overcrowded, traffic is miserable. You've heard time and time again, the infrastructure is not in place to support this density. And, yeah, kids are dealing with class sizes that are out of control, I noticed your grandson's probably in that same mix. Lacking a designation of R4, I'm not anti-development, in fact, I think this developer's been one of the better ones to work with, so I don't want to give him an impression that I feel development is evil, but I do want to see some sort of transition. In twelve homes, butting a five-acre plot is not a transition. So, at minimum, I would like to see that several of the proposed lots, and I don't know if I can bring that slide up, but there was one proposed shotgun-style lot right up against Bot Lane there that I would like to see removed from the building plan. And in addition, the orchard area there has two homes directly right here. I would propose that those lots can be at least merged, so there is better transition between our acreage. I also have concern about this pathway, I think it's a great idea, but this is private property back here, and we already have all kinds of trespassing occurring, people walking dogs, disposing of dog waste in our yard, and so I would like to see some sort of gate or something to indicate that the walkway ends there and the following area is private property. I guess three minutes is not gonna be enough, but, yeah, I just don't think this is consistent with the subdivision they proposed. The lots that they've, or the conceptual home plans, I don't even think will fit on the size lots that they're proposing in this R8 area, so I would really like to see what the conceptual homes look like on these smaller R8 lots. Keep it consistent, keep it rational, preserve our peace, security, safety, and serenity, that's what I ask.
Thank you.
That was all the sign-ups, Madam Mayor.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to provide testimony?
My name is Denise LeFevere, six-seven-zero-six North Meridian, Idaho. Getting tired, I can tell, but anyhow, I have one question, and my question's kinda weird, it's not for any of these, it's for Mayor Tammy and the council. If I understood Justin correctly, he's saying that they aren't going to pay to improve that road, they're relying on the developer to do it, so if we strike that out of the development agreement, I'm a taxpayer, am I gonna be asked to be footing the bill? That's what I wanna know. Who's gonna pay for improving that road? Will it be put, shifted to the taxpayers?
Typically, collectors are built by development, and I think that Justin had mentioned that. So, no, the taxpayer does not build those roads, which is probably the contention right now.
That's my, that is my concern, if you strike that and it goes to Cloverdale, they have the impact, they're causing the impact from development, so if you strike it and it has to be done, and ACHD isn't gonna do it, somebody's gotta do it, and I don't wanna pay for it as a taxpayer, so.
Thank you.
Justin, I would have a follow-up question for you. I, if you'll state your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just for the record, Justin Lucas, representing the Ada County Highway District, three-seven-seven-five Adam Street, Garden City, Idaho.
Thank you. So, on, from Cloverdale end to where this proposed development is, I noticed that neither churches improved the road, why was that?
So if we can bring up that aerial view-
And I guess just a follow-up question to that is, if collectors are put in from development, didn't you miss your opportunity to, to make that connection?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, in certain situations, such as this one, specifically with the Cloverdale Church of God as it is detailed there on the screen, that church was built a long time ago, and requirements have changed over time, especially for projects that were developed in the county. That church was there before most everything else you can see on the screen, probably, it's been there a really long time. And back then, in the county, certain developments were allowed, and neither the county nor ACHD required improvements at that time. And so what ACHD does in these situations is, we have a program, we call it our community programs, where we will go and rectify these situations based on the requests of the city through our annual integrated five-year work plan prioritization. Also, at times, through an adjacent project like the widening of Cloverdale Road, we will look at intersection improvements at Cloverdale and Bot Lane, and we may be able to widen back- We may be able to widen back into that area at that time. I'm not saying that's going to happen with Cloverdale Road. I'm saying that's another mechanism we have to rectify those situations. But ultimately, the other way it happens is the, and this has happened actually many times, these properties redevelop. The church properties and other properties, other uses that were developed a long time ago in the county. Maybe the church itself stays, but they want to redevelop a portion of their property. And through that process, you and ACHD have the ability to require those improvements. So, I don't know if that's an exact answer to your question. There are multiple mechanisms we have to rectify this situation, none of which, to be clear, are attached specifically to this project.
Well, and none of which Meridian has influence on. If some of this you mentioned is to be improved through perhaps community programs and it is requested by the city, well, that's in Boise. And actually, that is in unincorporated Ada County. So who's going to make that request?
The county has the same request process that you have. So does the city of Boise. And this falls, as you duly noted, within their impact area. And the citizens also have the ability to request these types of projects directly to ACHD. And that happens on occasion where we will go out and make an improvement on an older local or collector's street and add pedestrian facilities that are not currently there through that community programs process. But that program has limited funding, so a lot of competition and needs all over the county for those types of resources. But they are available and we can work with the adjacent property owners to make that happen.
So basically, I think development is not going to improve this road as it sits today. So now I have a greater understanding of perhaps what the Planning and Zoning Commission was contemplating here.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yeah, it depends on how you define development or redevelopment or the timing of these improvements. Certainly, those issues are complex and things don't always happen like dominoes.
Exactly. But if you're going to put that many homes and people out there, public safety is one of the largest concerns that we have. And that does, that does pose some concerns.
At your discretion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further testimony? Yes, sir. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Fultcher. I own the property at 4330 East Bot Lane, which is this piece right here. And primarily, I just wanted to wish you a Merry Christmas, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
I think this is going to be a great development. I'm in favor of it. The only thing I wanted to comment on is we've owned this property for, oh, I don't know, six years or so. And sitting right down here at the Church of God is almost always an Idaho State Police officer. A lot, often. I think they have some type of a satellite agreement with the Cloverdale Church of God. And for somebody to be speeding down Bot Lane would be hazardous to their driving record, I suspect. Because if there isn't one here, there's two or three or four, and it's night and day. And in fact, I got pulled over on a tractor one time by the Idaho State Police. And so.
Were you speeding?
Yes, I was going a little too fast. I suppose I'm bawling. I don't know. But anyways, I just wanted to comment on that and point that out. But that's all that I had to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further testimony? You cannot testify from your seat. You'll restate your name.
Earl Essen. Okay, the map you have up right now, from the Kingsley House and the bridge and irrigation canal all the way to Cloverdale, there's not one house that is currently impacted except for the old Kingsley log cabin. Okay? Right now is the prime opportunity to come through where there are no homes, there are no underground utilities, there are no underground piping for irrigation, there are no power poles. You could go straight on down and it's not going to affect the baseball diamond area that the church owns. It's prime time to do this. And to not do it now or plan on having it done with all the traffic that's going up and down there without mitigating with a traffic rotary circle at Trenton, people go fast, okay? Russ pointed out that when they come by the church, they're not speeding. Well, I don't know if you've ever taken a turn, but normally you're not going more than 25 miles an hour. By the time they go 600 foot, they're at about 35 to 40 miles an hour, okay? It's prime time. All that area is wide open.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to wrap this up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
If you'll restate your name for the record.
Deborah Nelson with Givens Personally on behalf of the applicant. I'll just respond to comments, I guess, in the order they came in from Ms. Carnes. You know, talking about transition to rural lots. We're at the minimum density that's really allowed under your comp plan for this area at 3.1 and the range is three to eight. So, and the larger lots are concentrated on the outside of the development. Concerns with traffic on Bot Lane. The developer's actually offering a great opportunity for the city and the area to provide the connectivity that doesn't exist right now. And with connectivity, there does introduce more trips, but it creates the pattern that you need as the city develops into this area. The alignment has been specifically designed with traffic slowing in mind. You see some of the curves that happen there. And ACHD thought about that when they approved that design for safety. There was a comment about wanting the road to be wide enough to accommodate bike lanes. And we will have bike lanes because it is a collector road as well as detached sidewalks. A concern from Mr. Essen about drainage. All of our drainage onsite will be kept and retained onsite as required and handled in our common areas. A concern about, from Ms. Marsh about wanting some communication as we come in with the landscape barrier. The developer's very happy to do that. When there's, they review the construction plans, they will contact her. And also, at the time, it's right before pre-construction. So they're very happy to be in pretty constant communication and coordination with them about that. And also, they have committed to help them with the vacation, which they've continued to raise as a concern. And we're happy to help them through that process. Mr. Marsh raised a concern about, one sign on Kingsley was the only sign he noticed. There were two signs as required on Bot and Peaceful Pond with the proof of postings sent into the city. Again, additional comments about transition and, you know, just reminding the city that we really are in compliance with your comprehensive plan that you've already determined for this area. If the irrigation district would allow it, we'd be happy to see about a gate. I think that's unlikely that an irrigation district is going to allow you to gate off that irrigation road that runs along the 10-mile feeder, but we are open to that if they would allow it. That landscape screen that's in front of the Marsh property, I think will maybe help some, address some of their concerns about people continuing to use that. But certainly, we believe it is important to provide that pathway along the 10-mile feeder that we are providing. You know, several comments about, I guess, getting to the issue of paying your fair share. I do just want to remind, you know, as Mr. Lucas pointed out with ACHD, you know, we are paying impact fees for all of our off-site improvements. That's how ACHD does have developments address their off-site impacts, and that's through the payment of impact fees, which we are paying. We're also building over 2,500 feet of collector roadways within this small development, which is significant. From a development standpoint, remember, they get no benefit out of that because you can't put front-on driveways onto a collector. So it's just improvements for the surrounding areas, connectivity. And so they are contributing quite a bit in that way. You know, Ms. Essen commented in his second time here about the opportunities along Bot Lane. That openness will still be there when those properties go to develop and that opportunity will exist. What isn't there right now is right-of-way, south of where that existing pavement goes right up against that edge. And while he noted there's maybe no underground utilities, there are above-ground utilities, including a power pole kind of right at the corner there of Cloverdale and Bot, that create problems there. So for all of the reasons that I tried to highlight earlier, you know, feasibility problems with the right-of-way, the road's not designed off drainage, no ability to capture that, and the cost, you know, prohibition, we still ask you to remove that condition. I think that's all I have for you unless I missed anything. Okay? Questions?
Mr. Burnt?
I don't remember who voiced the concern about the fence. Okay, there you go. A couple people did. And can you address the concern about the fence, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, thank you for asking that. I missed that. Yes, we are perfectly happy to fence the Fultcher property as was requested. That is part of the plan. So there was a concern about that privacy fence going in there. By the Essence raised that, that they wanted that fence separating from their hayfield and the Fultcher property, and that will be done.
About the Marshes?
The Marshes is where we've proposed the larger landscaping agreement in the front of their property. We've got the rocks and the landscaping that's proposed. As far as the request to reduce lots around their property, that's not something that we can agree to. Yes, we are also going to fence the west side of the Fultcher property, which is the one that would be adjacent to the Marshes there. Can we capture your questions?
Yes, I, I'm just, the Marshes, the other property, the Fultchers, and so I'm just trying to put in my mind where, you know, you have multiple property owners with multiple property lines. And so I'm just sort of trying to picture in my mind where these fences are going, so. Multiple people wanting fences.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Sorry. Mr. Burnt, I don't know if you were done with your questions. I apologize.
Go ahead, Mr..
And maybe to, I think we're, Councilmember Burnt's trying to conceptualize. If you could pull up your site plan or your map and maybe use the little light pen and kind of make sure you can show us where the fencing would occur. The layout of this development with that kind of infill piece that's not developed makes it hard to kind of follow the bouncing ball as to who owns what. And I know that all of you in the audience are kind of well aware of your property boundaries, but for us, it would be a little more helpful if we could see exactly what you're speaking about, if you don't mind.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, the entire perimeter of the property will have privacy fences, which would then extend all along the Marshes property here. And that would also cover the back of the Fultchers that would go along the, can we see that? Is that the Essence there? Sonya, you may need to help us eliminate, there we go. Do we have one that has the aerial? Here, this is better. It doesn't have the aerial, but, so the entire perimeter of the property that goes up around here and also along the perimeter of the Marshes where we have adjacent.
Great.
Should be this side. Anything else?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you both. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Deb, should this get approved, what's your development timeline? How quickly do you anticipate beginning construction?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cavanagh, this spring. So right away.
Madam Mayor? And I guess where I'm getting to, and I'm sure there'll be comments later, there's a lot of elements of this application that I really like. And I think it's a, is a exceptional neighborhood for our community. My largest sticking point, and where I'm trying to, hopefully, maybe you can help me understand, the elementary, middle, and high school that this neighborhood's going to support is severely overcrowded. And again, there's no magic wand to solve that. But how, help me understand how I can articulate to our citizens that despite this being a really great neighborhood for our community, the negative impact it's going to have on our schools. I'm hoping you can give me some insight as to how that's going to positively impact their students when they won't ever get any benefit of this amazing neighborhood.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Cavanagh, I mean, any time development comes in, you're adding new students into schools, right? I mean, that is the nature of building out your city. Your comprehensive plan has called for there to be this and greater density in this area. And so that plan is already in place and set those forces in motion to bring in more students into your school district. And as that occurs in accordance with your own planning efforts, those properties then pay tax dollars that go into the system. Schools have to make new plans. Sometimes in a larger scale, that involves redistricting or building new facilities. Sometimes that involves bonds for new capital improvements. I mean, there's all kinds of ways that school districts build out in response to development. In the grand scheme of things in your city, this is a pretty small development with a fairly small addition. Doesn't mean that doesn't create its own incremental impact on your schools, but that is just part of a growing city and the accommodation that schools have to make.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
One quick clarification, that southern boundary fence line, or the easement, excuse me, where the 15-foot easement is proposed, is that easement located within the fence line, upon the private property line? I think I got confused on.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, I think I confused you on that because Sean had to correct what I said about that. The fence line will be on the outside of the easement around the property line.
So, Madam Mayor? Yeah, that clarifies it. I'm just trying to get some comfort with how a property owner handles that long-term if their fence is, or landscaping, whatever they put back there, which they probably will, can get torn out. And then, the homeowners' cost to replace their fence that gets torn out. It's just a, I get why, I get why they're requesting, there's pros and cons to both ways, but that's a tricky one. I don't know how you avoid that problem.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Borton, if it would be helpful to address that comment and those, the concerns that were raised by Councilmember Milam, in addition to what's in the CCNRs that designate that and put, you know, put forth the restrictions, we could also add an additional disclosure. Now, I mean, sometimes that's helpful or sometimes it's not. It's another thing to look at. But if it's separate from, you know, CCNRs where it might be buried, we'd be happy to, for those lots, include an additional disclosure at closing that they see the restrictions that apply on their lot. If that would be helpful, we could do that.
Madam Mayor, it certainly couldn't hurt. I know you're kind of in a pinch trying to figure out. That's a tough one, but at least the additional measures to disclose that people, you know, go into it with their eyes wide open that that could occur, that's helpful. I'm not sure what else you could do, quite frankly.
Other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Sorry, Deb. One more. One of the things that I really like about this application is how the amenities are spread out throughout the neighborhood. I hope development takes cues from what you guys are doing and we see more of that. In regards to the amenities being built, I assume kind of the amenities in each phase will be built as each phase is being built out? Or do they all come in with one phase or after a certain tipping point?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, that is correct.
There's a lot good about this application. My concern, Matt. There's a lot good about this application. My concern matches the, the neighbors, and once you build the bridge, the, the exit out to Cloverdale is going to be a problem with a lot of cars going that way. I don't know if Ada County Highway District is, we've done a number of public-private partnerships in the city of Meridian to get roads done and developers paid back through impact fees, the impact fees that, that they collect on their building permits and those in that area. Is that something that, I don't know if ACHD would do it, but is that something that you could do some road improvements with, pay every reimbursable agreement?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, in some situations, you know, in some developments, we have gone, gone into agreements with ACHD to make improvements and been reimbursed by credits through impact fees. But it requires it to be, you know, a priority enough improvement for ACHD based on trip counts and other funding allocation that they've put it in their capital improvements plan. And so it's eligible for credits. You know, here, there, this wasn't a road that ACHD had planned to improve anytime soon, nor did they believe that the trips from this development were going to put it at a point where it needed to be. That's not to say that it doesn't ultimately have to be improved, and, and they believed that that would happen incrementally as the properties around them develop and each of them provide their, their frontage. And, and our impact fees will be in their coffers for them to use as they do allocate roadway improvements. But no, that wasn't, that wasn't an option here for us.
The bridge is a blessing and a curse.
Right.
And major collectors do generate traffic that are trying to travel through that square mile. So it is setting up a potential safety concern, for sure.
Understand.
Any, anything further from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the, the comment is over. Unless council would like to hear additional.
We've allowed him to speak once already. But if he feels he, something. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I was kind of mumbling to myself. We've allowed, I think, this individual to speak already in additional time. If he feels there's something that is incredibly pressing that needs to be corrected on the record, I'm supportive of that as long as the testimony is focused on that specific item. And again, letting the public know that the applicant will have one last additional time to be the last one to speak. I'm, I'm always supportive. The public's here. They want to testify, as long as it's very narrowly focused.
There you go.
You wanted to correct something for the record.
Earl Edward Essen, Bot Lane, can you bring up the aerial photo? She's addressing. Okay, there you go. Okay. She was stating that I was worried about drainage and that no drainage would come into our property. I'm talking about irrigation and wastewater ditches, okay, state law. So if you notice this big field here, if you take and move it forward here, you have almost 15 acres of irrigatable land all along the western property boundary of that. And then underneath the street right here and all the way out to the other subdivision is wastewater drainage. That is not on the map. That has been addressed in the little meetings we've had on the street. And that needs to be maintained. That is a right of way that's granted to us as farmers and users of water with state law. Not that water was going to drain off their property. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Hey, and any comment from the developer?
Very quickly, Deborah Nelson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there's concerns with the irrigation runoff, we will address that with our final construction plans and as best that we can and are required to. I'm, I'm not specifically aware of the concern he's addressing, other than if it's part of our development, we will address it with our construction plans.
And it is a requirement through the Right to Farm Act that you maintain those.
We will comply with all of those laws. Is anything else, Madam Mayor?
No.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we close the public hearing on H. 2018-0112.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Just start some discussion for what it's worth on, on, I think it's, I think it's a great project. I think it's consistent with, with what has been planned for in the area. There's just unique challenges on the border here and probably elsewhere in the city that we're going to have to confront. On the, the, some of the main issues that were discussed and perhaps not necessarily resolved, the, the easement, the 15-foot easement on that southern border being located within the private property. I understand why it's there. I appreciate the applicant's commitment to add additional disclosures within the, the CCNRs to try and inform property owners of, of that risk. At least so they understand their, their rights and, and issues with that fence. On, on, with regards to the off-site improvements, the 1.1G, I understand the intent, but I also understand what, what may be the proper role in government. We, we have applicants build, you know, the to and through and design these things for, in this case, a collector usage far beyond the technical requirements and demand created by the development itself. And there's good reason for that and policy for that, but we're aware of that. So to add additional off-site improvements, even if, even if you could, I'm not certain that's necessarily the appropriate role. I don't think that's the role here. We have adjacent development. This happens all the time in our city where adjacent development isn't built out. It comes, it doesn't always come in the right order, and the order we prefer complicated a bit because we don't control the property. It's not within the city, or our area of impact to the east. So it does complicate it here. But I don't think this application needs to carry the burden, nor is it appropriate for us to ask them to do so, even though the intentions are good and, and in trying to have them expand it. So I'm, I'm fine with the 1.1G being removed. If the ACHD condition, which I think I saw in their staff report, speaks to that commitment that they had made to maintain at least the gravel shoulders within the right of way. I think that's an appropriate scope for that, and if the applicants agreed to do so, I think going any further is too much. If there was ever an opportunity for the applicant to encourage Ada County to apply this on behalf of this community program to assist to rectify the problem on Bot Lane, by all means, that would be helpful. I'm just looking through the just initial thoughts on some of the conditions of approval that were in discussion. I agree with Councilmember Cavanagh, the dispersment of the open, or the amenities is a great, great to see. There's a lot of positive with this application, so I'm supportive of it with those comments on those couple of conditions.
Okay, Mr. Cavanagh.
I tend to agree with Councilmember Borton. Again, I think it would be another night of firsts if we required improvements on a road in a jurisdiction that doesn't belong to us. It'd be kind of weird. I don't know how we'd get away with that. So I am, I'm supportive of, of removing that condition as well. The, the part that, that does give me pause, in addition to my concerns about the impact on our schools, and I appreciate Ms. Nelson for sharing her perspective, and I don't disagree. I believe Mountain View is the most overcrowded school, high school in the district, maybe the state, or add additional students there. That, that does cause me pause. In addition, the potential for Bot Lane to become, you know, I believe one of the members of the public provides some testimony, thinks about Woodbridge, and I know Councilmember Burton can attest to what that's like in his neighborhood, and I've seen that firsthand, the amount of cut-through traffic at high speed that takes advantage of that. So perhaps this could be an opportunity to address some form of traffic calming. It sounds like our fine state troopers are doing a good job at Cloverdale, but perhaps maybe something else along Bot Lane to address what inevitably will be an increased traffic to that particular area. And Madam Mayor, I think you put it best. There's, there's a lot of really great things with this application. You know, we heard some testimony about concern about transition. Quite frankly, I think this is great transition. I think this is a neighborhood anybody would be proud to live in and proud to have, you know, be connected to their neighborhood. So I think more or less I'm supportive. If we can find some opportunities to address maybe some of the traffic issues that this application will, will potentially bring, I think it looks really good.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I appreciate the applicant. They did a great job presenting their application. Thankful for the residents who came and expressed their concern. I always appreciate their point of view. Sometimes living amongst or nearby proposed development, you know. They have firsthand knowledge of what will come and, and the potential problems and also advantages that may may come with it as well. So I appreciate, appreciate the testimony. I do live in Woodbridge. Say it a lot, you all know. And the only, and I have the same issue with this, with this development, is that that connector road, that collector road on Bot Lane is, is going to turn into a, I, I just, it's, in my opinion, it's just not going to be safe. I don't know if it's there's going to be some traffic issues there. And unfortunately, the process that we have to deal with, you know, roads in our, in our city, in our, in our county is just, it's, it's, I'm just, it's on, it, this is backwards to me. It keeps me up at night. I don't understand it. I don't, it doesn't make any sense to me at all why we can't widen this road when we have the opportunity to do it. I know that Justin came up and explained why we don't do it. I know that he's the guy here representing ACHD and he gets the dart sometimes. I, I get the process, but I don't agree with the process. I think the process is absolutely backwards. This is a perfect opportunity to fix this road because this road is going to be a problem. I guarantee it. It's going to be an issue. And it's, and, and that's just the, the subdivision, the proposed application is great. I literally have no issues with it. It's beautiful. It's going to be a great subdivision. People are going to live there. It's going to be fantastic. But that road is going to be a mess, and it puts us in an awkward position, you know. But what do we do? Do we say no to a great application? Just be, and if we say no to that application, then there will never be any development on that, in that entire area because development brings infrastructure. I'm telling you, ACHD, if you're listening, this process is backwards. Please fix it. Because you're putting us in bad positions. This is not right. It's awkward for me to even be saying this, but it's true. I don't like it. I don't, I don't like looking at these guys right now and explaining to them that it's just, it stresses me out. So those are my concerns.
Any further comments? This is me out too.
It needs done now. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
I guess, yeah, it's pretty much as echoing what everybody else said for the most part. This is a great, this is a great project. I love the amenities, the open space, the fact that the amenities aren't just like one place on the far end somewhere. They're spread out throughout the development. So I really appreciate the thought that went into that. The neighbors are right. I mean, the road needs done. That's not your responsibility. It's, it's, it does come with the development. There's, we don't have any jurisdiction over roads, right? So we can't, we can't develop that road for you. As much as all of us sitting up here would love to just go, this is going to happen, you know, before this development comes in, there's nothing we can do. And, and that's really hard. But what Justin mentioned was that you can, they have a program for the neighbors to get it done. So you need, you're going to be in touch with ACHD, get that program, get on the list, and start working with them to get that road improved prior to that, the entire street being built out, unless all of you are planning on developing your property in the next couple of years.
So then you talk to their county commissioners, too.
County commissioners.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We'll make a motion and see where it goes. I'm going to move that we approve H. 2018-0012 after consideration of, of staff applicant and public testimony. And that approval to be as presented with the conditions of approval in the staff report of December 18th, 2018. And that approval to include the, the comments and commitments of the applicant in today's hearing. And to allow the removal of proposed condition 1.1G concerning off-site improvements in light of the discussion of council today. And it would, I believe the condition already is set that allows for the placement of the easement upon the private property. To include that, I can't find the easement, or excuse me, I can't find the condition number, but the approval of the easement to be located on the building lots rather than on a common lot. It looks like it's condition 1.2A, perhaps? Permit that to occur as well.
I have a motion to approve in a second by Ms. Milam.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
In Mr. Borton's eloquent motion, and I don't want to take anything away from that, I, I didn't hear any thing related to any potential traffic calming measures along Bot Lane. I don't know if that was
I don't know if that was intended, unintended.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
It was, the omission was intended. There was no additional condition with regards to traffic calming. And part of that being, Madam Mayor, is you've got, it's a bit kind of back and forth. If you've got a relatively narrow road with gravel shoulders and narrow roads, oftentimes you're utilized to calm traffic and keep things slower. To ask for Bot Lane to be improved and then narrowed or calmed in a manner, it seems a bit inconsistent. So its current condition, quite frankly, might be a form of traffic calming.
Any further questions, discussion?
Madam Mayor, just a comment then.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate the motion. Appreciate the second. We'll see where it goes. I'm very supportive of the application, but I'm going to be voting against this motion. I do think that there's an opportunity, whether it's a, again, I'm trying to use the term right, speed pillow or something along those lines. I'm either near or adjacent to the neighborhood to slow that traffic down. I think it's the best mechanism, I think, that we have to address what I heard was the concerns of the residents as to what this road will inevitably become.
I agree.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Discussion continues. So what is an example of an additional condition that would try to capture that? I don't think that was really fleshed out, so I'm not certain what that might entail. I get the intent, and it makes, the intent makes sense, but I don't know what you have in mind.
Well, being as how we're not traffic engineers, this could always be continued and let the applicant solve that question rather than up here. So if that is an option, you could reopen the public hearing for that one specific item.
Madam Mayor.
Mr., Ms. Mylum.
Couldn't we just prove it and add into the motion that they will put in some form of traffic calming measures? And then they could figure out what the best way, whether them and ACHD can figure out what that best solution would be, since really that's not our jurisdiction anyway.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Continuing conversation. I am more supportive of having the applicant engage with ACHD as to a recommended remedy to the concern as opposed to continuing it to allow that same conversation to occur. There again, there's a motion on the table. I don't want to take away from that, but I'm much more supportive of that.
Mr. Burton, do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, Madam Mayor. This discussion, while plodding at times, is helpful, and I understand what you're trying to capture, and it makes, certainly makes sense, the intent, so I would, to address that concern as well, be glad to amend the motion to include a condition that asks, or requires the applicant to work with ACHD to implement some form of appropriate traffic calming on Bot Lane to also capture the, and address the concerns of the citizens.
Madam Mayor.
Would second agree.
Second agrees. Just want to clarify that when you say on Bot Lane, you don't mean like all the way down Bot Lane. I mean, they really are in charge of their section of Bot Lane.
East of the bridge.
I just wanted to be honest with you.
East of the bridge is the, we're talking.
So the original motion has been amended to include the traffic calming. Any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton? Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you for your joining us and for your testimony. We appreciate you being here, and Merry Christmas. Okay, item 9E is a public hearing that has been requested to continue, and we've already done that, to the 15th. Item F is a public hearing, H. 2018-0096. I will open the public hearing, but the applicant has requested to withdraw this application, and I would need to have council action to do so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If it necessitates a motion, I'd move that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw the application, H. 2018-0096.
Have a motion in a second to approve the request to withdraw the application. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
All ayes. I'm going to call a 10-minute break.